Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss- Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowens?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Low. Minutes, Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am. Public comments we had or do not want to speak against agenda items. Number nine, public hearings, we start with number nine A, Indrio Road rezoned and planned unit development. And the presentation is going to be made by?
Erin Taylor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Low and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. For the record, my name is Erin Taylor, Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I will be presenting Agenda Item 9A for a rezone from the AR1 Agricultural Residential Zoning District to the PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District and a preliminary development plan for a 274-unit multifamily residential development with associated site improvements. This item was previously heard on the June 15th and September 28th, 2023 P&amp;Z hearings, and was continued to the November 16th, 2023 meeting. The applicant requested a continuance from the November 16th meeting to tonight. Courtesy mailed notifications were mailed to residents within 500 feet of the subject parcel on December 6th, 2023, alerting property owners of the December 14th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. The Planning and Development Services Department did not receive any responses to the mailed notifications. Since the P&amp;Z Commission's last action on the matter, two comments were received through the public comment portal, and those responses have been included in the agenda packet. Are we okay up here?
We have two screens that won't.
Okay, I can wait.
Screens taken care of.
Chair, we'll wait until you get it sorted.
You keep going, I will watch them.
Okay. Okay. The 32.58 acre project site is situated on the south side of Indrio Road and the west side of Taylor Dairy Road in Fort Pierce within the county's airport and TVC, towns, villages, and countryside overlay districts. The subject parcel and the properties situated to the west are designated by the TVC future land use with residential median land uses to the north and mixed-use land uses to the south and east. On May 30th, 2006, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the TVC Land Development Code Regulations and Comprehensive Plan Element to further guide land use and development within the portions of the unincorporated St. Lucie County to protect public health, welfare, and safety, and ensure the aesthetic and environmental resources are further enhanced and protected from impairment while avoiding urban sprawl. Prior to the adoption of the TVC overlay district, the subject parcel had an underlying residential medium land use designation. The requested rezoning is not increasing the allowable density. Policy 11 dot 1 dot 1 dot 2E establishes the transferable development value, allowing the subject parcel up to nine dwelling units per acre. The proposed 8.42 dwelling units per acre falls under this limit. Through the planned development approval process, the application is seeking to redesignate the subject parcel zoning from AR1 Agricultural Residential 1 to the Planned Unit Development or PUD zoning designation. The Planned Unit Development Zoning District is compatible with the TVC future land use designation as per the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing a 274-unit multifamily development with one, two, and three-bedroom apartments and associated on-site amenities. The preliminary plan identifies seven, two, and three-story apartment buildings, stormwater retention, interconnected sidewalks, a clubhouse, pool, passive recreation areas, a dog park, and community garden, and supporting vehicular parking. A 7.48 acre preservation area has been designated at the rear of the property. A 0.58 acre future ingress egress area has been reserved along the western property boundary to accommodate future growth and development to the south of the property. The development provides utility infrastructure connections through the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority and will offer central water, wastewater, and electrical connections to all buildings. Additionally, internal vehicular use areas and pedestrian pathways provide adequate connections to existing infrastructure and meets the provisions for access to new developments. The Indrio Woods planned development clusters seven apartment buildings in the central and northern portions of the property with interconnected drive aisles and sidewalks throughout, connecting the buildings to open space and amenities that will include passive recreation, a dog park, and community garden. In prior P&amp;Z meetings, the Commission asked for the following discussion points to be looked at: compatibility with the adjacent Binney Estate, Taylor Dairy Road improvements, including intersection geometry at Indrio Road, stormwater and right-of-way needs, stormwater requirements for the proposed site, and a joint access on Indrio Road at Royal Palm Drive or Deleone at the northwest corner of the project site. The location and size of the building in the northeast corner of the property has been reduced from three stories to two stories and is now oriented parallel to Indrio Road. The current location provides an approximate 300-foot separation, including a lake, between the northern structure on the Binney Estate and the multifamily building. The PUD preliminary site plan requires a 15-foot-wide landscape buffer along the northern property line along Indrio Road and the eastern property line along Taylor Dairy Road, and a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer between the subject property and the approved Cabo Rio Recreational Vehicle Resort to the west. A 20-foot-wide landscape buffer, which is an increase of 10 feet from the last submission, with a two-foot-high berm and a six-foot-tall opaque buffer, is proposed between the subject property and the 5.27-acre parcel in the center of the subject parcel. To provide architectural consistency with the Edwin Binney Estate, the buildings will feature the Old Miami style, including offset window treatments, Bahamas shutters, arch details, and vertical columns. The bottom image represents the latest architectural elevations proposed for the three-story buildings. The preliminary plan identifies primary paved access on the west side of Taylor Dairy Road with a full-access driveway and a right-in, right-out along Indrio Road. Right-of-way improvements to Taylor Dairy Road will be required to be permitted through the county. The county is requesting improvements and sidewalks to Taylor Dairy Road from Indrio Road to the southern property line. Joint access between the subject parcel and the approved Cabo Rio project to the east was discussed between both parties. However, given that Cabo Rio is an approved site plan with development permits absent a joint access agreement incorporated into the approved plans, a joint access agreement was not reached. The ingress egress along Indrio Road was moved west to provide greater buffering between the drive aisle and the Binney Estate. The ingress egress along Taylor Dairy Road was moved south, providing greater separation between the Indrio Road-Taylor Dairy Road intersection and the development's entrance. The applicant has revised their improvement plan for Taylor Dairy to extend construction to their southern boundary. The development... The proposed planned unit development rezone and preliminary regulating plan conformed to the standards of review as set forth in St. Lucie County Land Development Code Sections 4 dot 04 dot 04, 11 dot 06 dot 03, and 11 dot 02 dot 07, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies outlined within the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the following conditions of approval. Prior to major site plan approval, a small trash receptacle and screening shall be provided near the clubhouse pool rec area. Prior to major site plan approval, a development schedule indicating the approximate date construction of the development or stages of development can be expected to begin and be completed as required. The final site plan shall include construction of Taylor Dairy Road by the developer from the intersection at Indrio Road to the southern property boundary, as displayed in the preliminary site plan. Prior to major site plan approval, a revised upland... This is from Environmental Resources. An revised upland buffer planting plan shall be certified for the proposed flowway areas that include canopy, understory, and ground cover plantings, native species only. Prior to the commencement of development, including but not limited to clearing, filling, excavating, grading, or planting of vegetation as defined in Land Development Code Section 2 dot 00 dot 00, the developer shall provide an executed conservation easement over the upland preserve area along with an approved Preserve Area Monitoring and Management Plan, the PAMP, with an attached affidavit and cashier's check to the county attorney. The applicant shall also provide a Geo Reference GIS Shapefile or CAD file of the conservation easement boundaries to St. Lucie County. Also from Environmental Resources, prior to the commencement of development, including but not limiting to clearing, filling, excavating, grading, or planting of vegetation, a 100% survey per Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Protocol for Gopher Tortoises shall be provided. If any construction activities are proposed within 25 feet of any gopher tortoise burrows, a relocation permit also shall be provided in accordance with FWCC requirements. Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, all Category 1 listed invasive plants shall be eradicated from the site. From the Public Works Department, prior to the issuance of a site development permit, a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Indrio Road is required to be completed. A site development permit is required prior to performing site improvement activities. And prior to issuance of a site development permit, a road improvement agreement and appropriate bond will be required for all permanent improvements within the right-of-way. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up to the board for any questions from the staff. I have one question first. Was there any public comments for or against this project?
We received two comments through our public comment portal, and I believe those are on the back of your agenda packets. Would you like me to read them?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Give me one second, okay. So, this one was received on December 14th by Daniel King, 3402 Oregon Drive, Anchorage, Alaska 99504. "If the intent was to memorialize the Crayola House, it should have been put on a registry somewhere. It's poor coordination with the community at this point by the company to not find a better way to buffer the building, but if they aren't breaking any rules on property they own, they shouldn't be stopped. The community may not like it, but the housing is needed." Sorry. The second statement was also submitted on the 14th by a Sheila Flynn, 4820 slash Pine Trail, Fort Pierce, Florida 34951. "Good evening, my name is Sheila Flynn, I live at 4820 slash Pine Trail, Fort Pierce, 34951. I have some concerns about the proposed Indrio Woods development. My first concern is the rezoning of the property from AR1 to Planned Unit Development, PUD. I have concerns about the appearance and height of an apartment complex. There are no other structures in the area that are three stories high. If this apartment complex is built, it would dwarf the Binney Estate and look out of place. Moving forward in this development, I would like for you to reconsider the height of the complex. There are no apartment complexes in this area that are more than one story. My second concern is that there is a potential for too much development along Indrio Road between Taylor Dairy Road and slash Pine Trail. As a reminder, this section of Indrio Road is only two lanes. Right now, there are two additional tracts of land in the planning phases that are already zoned as RM9. The first is Indrio Pines Apartments. This 10.65 acre site is planning for 75 multifamily apartments. This property is located between slash Pine Trail and Heather Way Apartments. The second is Indrio Lakes. This 33.7 acre site is planning for 214 single-family lots. This property is located between Heather Way Apartments and Indian Pines Village condominiums. Please keep these other two projects in mind before making a final decision to change the Indrio Woods project of 32.5 acres from AR1 to Planned Unit Development." The big picture, that's over 75 acres of development with 563 units built in less than one mile on a two-lane road. My third concern is about the right-in, right-out-only, which was discussed at the previous September 28th, 2023 zoning meeting. My concern with this is if a person is exiting Indrio Woods, they will have... they have to turn right and head east on Indrio Road. If their final destination is west of Indrio Woods, where would they safely turn around? The first place they would be able to turn around to head back west is Conley Place. Second is Indian Pines Village. Third is Heather Way Apartments, or next would be the private road I live on, which is slash Pine Trail. All of the above options are not safe for turning around on a two-lane road. If a person heading west on Indrio Road is wanting to enter Indrio Woods, they would have to either turn into the Windy Sea Parking Lot, advance auto parts, or go to the intersection of Kings Highway and Indrio Road to make the U-turn so they can make a right-in turn. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, Sheila Flynn.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to the board, any questions from the staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Staff, is the applicant in agreement with all of the conditions?
Yes.
They are, okay. And how can we address the issue of the traffic concerns that Mrs. Flynn had?
So, a preliminary traffic report has been submitted. Once we move past the preliminary phase onto site plan approval, a traffic impact report will need to be supplied by the applicant that will dive deeper into the traffic, potential traffic issues. And during site plan approval, we can look at those details in a more minute fashion and see how we can assure that the traffic issues are not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff?
Chair Low.
Slack?
Is there a left-turn lane onto Taylor Dairy Road as you're headed westbound on Indrio?
I don't believe so, okay.
No, ma'am.
And is one proposed to go into this project? If you're traveling from US1 westbound, and now our main entrance is on Taylor Dairy Road, will they... will the applicant be including a left-turn lane as part of the project?
At this time, it is not proposed. However, I do believe with the traffic impact report, if one is required through that report, I believe the applicant would be amenable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Quick question.
Chairman. Go ahead.
Which one?
I said a question about the traffic report. If I'm on the initial traffic report, it's... if I'm reading it right, it's saying like weekday trips in and out in the morning is only 89 people leaving a 288-unit apartment complex to go to work? Is that normal to have a trip generation that low when there's 288 units in there? That's like, that's what, a third?
Chair Low, Commissioner Benner, the traffic statement that was provided is based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers' models, based upon assumptions. And when it's looking at weekday AM peak hours, it's selecting a 60-minute time period within that peak hour. So, that could be 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM or 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Certainly could be additional trips generated in the AM period, but within one hour, that's the estimated volume. That volume is based upon 288 units. The modified plan reduces it down to 274 units. So, we would see a marginal decrease. And again, with a final site plan, prior to any issuance of a certificate of capacity, this traffic statement would have to evolve into a full traffic report, considering the level of service, the adjacent roadways, the intersections, full distribution and movements, things like U-turns, things like turn lanes, lengths of queuing and stacking, and certainly to be considered. One component, too, is as we look at this particular area and with growth and activity. The signalized intersection at Indrio Road and Kings Highway has some streetlights and illumination. Indrio Road East, beyond the commercial plaza, does not. And so, that would be a component of staff's evaluation for safety at access points and the intersections to ensure that where there's going to be an increase in turn movements, that it's not pitch black.
Is that section midway to the east there, is that going to be improved at all for Indrio, or?
At this point, there's no slated capital improvements to widen Indrio Road. As noted with this project, Taylor Dairy would be expanded, the intersection of Taylor Dairy, and Indrio would need to be evaluated for turn radius and efficiency of movements, things like turn lanes. But Indrio Road has been improved and widened in some sections west of Kings Highway. There's a two-lane section that has more expansive green space and stormwater drainage that currently is not contemplated to be widened. And further east, heading to US1, at this stage, no contemplated widening. Eventually, there's consideration for extension of the county's greenway and trail and trying to provide pedestrian movement options along Indrio Road, but not in the short term.
I'm sure we went over it in one of the previous two meetings we've had, but can you just clarify again why... how we're jumping from one unit per acre to nine from AR1? I see the transferable development value map, but I'm just... There's not a lot of information showing how we're getting the nine.
So, the underlying land use is TVC, however, on the transferable development rights map, it allows for up to nine dwelling units per acre at this location. So, the current zoning is under that, but with the underlying density of up to nine dwelling units per acre, they can rezone up to that amount.
Okay.
So, that allows them up to that nine units, and then they're coming in with 8.42 dwelling units per acre.
Only with the rezoning?
With the rezoning, correct.
Currently could not be allowed to have nine units.
The zoning would currently not allow for nine units, but the future land use allows for up to nine units.
Okay. So, by property right, are they able to have nine units per acre, like if we did nothing?
No, the zoning would allow for one dwelling unit per acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Staff? I'm still concerned about the traffic flow into and out of this development, as well as traffic onto and exiting Taylor Dairy Road. Mr. Benton, with your magic fingers in the computer, can you expand either this picture or one to kind of show us a little bit more of the Indrio Road area?
Vice Chair Lowens, we'll provide an aerial here. Even we can go to the future street network exhibit. Might provide some consideration for what's intended to occur? Is this an exhibit we could work off of? Otherwise, we can pull an actual aerial?
My concern is some points that we've had up here before with traffic flow on Indrio Road. I think Mrs. Flynn has brought us to an attention that there's other developments going to be occurring on Indrio Road that maybe this board wasn't previously aware of. That's going to add more traffic to Indrio Road. That traffic, surely some of it's going to go west Kings Highway, go to the shopping center, and wherever. I am very concerned of the traffic that's going to exit this development. If I'm... walk me through this, they've got to come out, make a right, and go east on Indrio Road?
Vice Chair Lowens, the intersection and roadway improvements to Taylor Dairy would provide a full-access opening?
They can go left or right.
That is correct. So, if I work in New River County, off of Emerson Avenue or the extension in New River County, I would pull out to Taylor Dairy, head north. And again, with this modified plan, that access from the project to Taylor Dairy is further south, so farther away from the intersection movements, come up to the intersection, take a left, head westbound through the signalized intersection, and then turn right at Emerson to head north. If I'm coming home, I have the options of turning right into the entrance directly on Indrio. Or if I bypass that, I can take a right onto Taylor Dairy and come in that direction. If I'm coming from US1 to the east, I can turn onto Taylor Dairy and access the site. If I happen to overshoot that entrance, I would need to come to the signalized intersection, complete a U-turn, head back east, and I can turn right into the project directly from Indrio Road.
So, there's no provision to have a left or right turn on the Indrio Road entrance to this facility?
Not directly from the project driveway, merely from the improved Taylor Dairy roadway network.
Is there room on Indrio Road and right-of-way to provide that?
The short answer is probably. The challenge is the misalignment of this driveway and Royal Palm to the north that we've discussed at previous hearings. The applicant has modified their project entrance to not only come closer to aligning with that, as well as provide for a reservation of private land to facilitate a street network to extend further south. I think the design requirements, should that ever become a full-access intersection, whether that's signalized or unsignalized, could be an offset design of a roundabout, additional right-of-way acquisition to the north that jogs and realigns Royal Palm Drive or some other type of modified design because of that offset, which would be in the ballpark of 20 to 35 feet. But we've certainly observed creative strategies to accomplish that.
All right. Both of you fine young staff people, walk me through a little bit of the traffic impact that if you take this development and add it to the other ones that Mrs. Flynn, I think, is talking about, we're going to put a lot more traffic on Indrio Road. Where do our provisions for improvement on Indrio Road come into play to handle that additional traffic? Can... do you have a construction start time for the other two developments that are mentioned?
Vice Chair Lowens, to my knowledge, the county has not issued a certificate of concurrency or capacity for any of the mentioned projects. One is knee-deep in the site planning stage, and I understand toward the end of it that would have approval. That is essentially a part two of a multifamily project further to the east.
That will come before us, or will it?
It would not. It meets the zoning designation applied to the property. It's my recollection, it's in the ballpark of 100 and 120 units. I can provide some potential trip generation figures. And then, we've only held a pre-application conference or meeting that would consider a planned development for either villas or townhomes further east. Again, each project would require evaluation for transportation concurrency, considering the level of service of Indrio Road, any turn lanes, any intersection improvements prior to issuing a development order.
One of the advantages that this committee has is we have an opportunity with our variation of folks that sit on this board is to look at things that concern us for future development and such have you. I think it's one of the best things this board has got going for it. And one of those, to me, would be the added traffic on Indrio Road that we would not be privileged to make comments on from these other developments. But we are now aware of it. And my concern is that somewhere, sometime, we've got to get to a point in the county that says our infrastructure is going to be ready for the development. So, we're not chasing... So, we're not chasing our infrastructure behind the developments. Do you understand what I'm, somewhere we've got to get our infrastructure ahead of the developments, and I don't see that happening on Indrio Road. If we're going to put that much more traffic on Indrio Road with this development added into it, I've got real problems with that load. That's my comment, Mr. Benton, and ma'am, I'm getting old man concerned about our roadways or infrastructure. It's not only going to happen on Indrio Road, it's going to happen on Selvage Road, it's going to happen on Emerson Avenue, board somewhere. We got to make infrastructure ahead of the game. Thank you, sir, that's my coke box.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lowndes. Chair Low, if I may quickly, the Indrio Pines apartment project, and misstated, it's not exceed 75 units. So, roll that 100 to 120 unit figure back to 75 units that are actively under review to the east.
How many automobiles do we consider per development? Is it now 2.2?
Vice Chair Lowndes, it is contingent upon the type of development. For instance, a new single-family home, roughly 9.6 trips per day. For a multifamily project like this, closer to five to six and a half trips per day. The Indrio Pines Apartments Project to the east is estimated to generate 526 trips per day, and that captures the vehicle entering and exiting the site. That could occur a couple times a day.
How many automobiles do we have in our system when we have a development? Do we have a magic number that says, in this development, we say that that house is representing two automobiles?
In theory, yes, two automobiles, but those automobiles generating 9.6 trips per day, if it's a single-family home, if it's a multifamily unit, closer to six to seven trips per day.
Each vehicle?
Each unit, each residence.
How many vehicles do we give credit to in a house?
And again, Vice Chair Lowndes, it's, there's multiple variables, because it could capture a single occupant, it could capture multiple occupants, guests.
Okay.
The mailman, there's.
You know what I'm driving at. It used to be you had one car per family, now we got two or three. And that just adds more load on our infrastructure.
Certainly.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, staff?
Chair Low.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also have a question, staff. Not only the concerns of, I understand, you know, our role is to look at the development. At a later time, there will be consideration to the traffic flow that, at your level, if there's a concern, then they're going to have to fulfill those concerns of traffic flow at a later time before the development is approved to go further, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and so you're going to be addressing it down the line. Then to add into the complication, I think it's Cabo Rio, that development is also coming onto Indrio just east of this Indrio Woods.
Just west of Indrio Woods.
I apologize, yeah, just west, and also attaches into Kings Highway.
Correct.
Which would be, you know, south of Indrio. Now, that's just under development. What is that development there? Is it residential, is it apartments, is it, I've never really got an understanding of what that is.
Cabo Rio is a recreational vehicle park.
Okay.
So, my understanding is that people will reserve the flips for their, the different parking spaces for their recreational vehicles, come in, park, there's amenities on-site such as a pool, and they will enjoy the time there for a set period of time, and then move on.
Okay, and anticipation traffic flow coming out of Cabo Rio on the Indrio side?
I was, that was, that predates me, so I'll leave that to Cory to discuss the parking.
Chair Low, Commissioner Bridgers, the Cabo Rio Recreational Vehicle Park does not have direct access to Indrio Road aside from a stabilized emergency access. So, daily traffic would not enter the Cabo Rio site directly from Indrio Road. That's merely for a fire truck EMS.
Okay, so that development is for, just for fire and rescue and things of that nature?
That is correct, so the sole daily access is directly from Kings Highway for Cabo Rio.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yes, Chair Low.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a more general comment, and it kind of follows along in what Vice Chair Lowndes was speaking of. And that is that the lack of our ability to have a greater global picture of what's going on is, you mentioned earlier you might be able to bring up an aerial, that would be helpful. And when we are reviewing a project, if there are adjacent projects that are under site plan review or have had a pre-application meeting, rather than us hear about it from the local neighbors, it would be useful if staff would bring those up so that we would have an idea of context. And granted, those have not been permitted and approved, but those are things that are in the works, and it might help us have better perspective to see what's going on, and also, you know, bring all of that to light in a public hearing in a forum such as this so that the neighbors would understand the bigger picture as well.
And I'll let Cory contribute a statement as well. I do think it is a little bit difficult with pre-application meetings. We have a lot of pre-application meetings that don't go anywhere, meaning that, you know, they come in with grand plans or ideas, or, you know, we want to do this, and then interest rates rise, or construction costs go up, or they sell the property, and then we never hear from them again, and there's no follow-up on our part. You know, we're not hounding them, it's a, it's a meeting that they are bringing to the table, getting some great feedback from internal and external planners, and then they can take all of that information and say, yes, we'll move forward, and then we get formal applications, or they say, no, it's too costly, too time-consuming, not interested anymore, and they move on. So, I do completely respect where you're coming from, but with pre-applications, it's a little tricky because I would say, I don't know the exact percentages, but a big chunk of those we don't actually see come to fruition in the county. So, it would be difficult to say, we've had all these pre-apps, and we make decisions based on all the pre-apps that have come in, and then if none of them get developed, the people in front of you now have an actual application in process, and I would hate to see any of those applications be denied based on the what-ifs.
Certainly, and I understand where you're coming from with respect to the pre-application meetings. You're totally right about that, there's lots of fly-by-night ideas that show up on the back of a napkin.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yes, where we get a single document.
But at the point that they're serious enough to bring in all their documentations.
The formal applications.
Before the Development Review Committee, then perhaps that might be worthy of bringing to the public attention just for discussion purposes.
Absolutely, and we can discuss that more as a department, too, and see how we want to proceed so you guys feel like you're part of the discussion and not caught off guard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Chair Low? Yes.
Chair Low, Cory here. If I may, to expand upon that, with Commissioner Slack, we have an aerial exhibit on screen. And as we saw with the recent considerations for the right-of-way protection plan and updates to the county's long-range transportation landing exhibits, we were evaluating those, and we identified target areas where there's been an uptick in development applications or proposals, to ensure that we are trying to plan capital improvements to support existing zoning that allows for particular unit activities, but also aligning our roadway investment with utility investment. Working west to east, if I could, adjacent to Lakewood Park Elementary, where it's heavily wooded, that was a pre-application request, there's no active development petition there. Cabo Rio is identified here in yellow, that land is actively under development for approximately 146 recreational vehicle sites, getting access directly onto Kings Highway. There's reservation of commercial out parcel directly on Kings Highway. To the south, we held a pre-application request for a TVC project, but that is not transcribed into a formal site plan application. North of the Windexee Plaza or Indrio Crossings, we do have a multiple-story self-storage facility on this yellow site that has received site plan and conditional use approval and has a site development permit. Sugar Sands, which is roughly an 80-unit, single-story, multifamily project at Deleon, Miramar, and the northern extension of Royal Palm Drive, which has multiple names, as we've noted, that has site plan approval. The former PUD due north of Indrio Woods has not had any application activity in over a decade, to our knowledge, that is an expired, defunct PUD. To the northwest here, the county had acquired five lots, deeded those to St. Lucie County Habitat for Humanity. And we are expecting five individual duplexes that are connected to central water and wastewater to be developed there as an infill project. To the southeast of Indrio Woods and yellow, that's a prospective site for the county's north county wastewater treatment facility or immediately adjacent. And then further east on Indrio Road, the 75-unit Indrio Pines site plan that's coming toward a close, that is in purple and violet here. That's a formal application, then it would need to pursue site development and building permits, pay impact fees, and break ground. And then in green, we've held two pre-application meetings for the land, as noted here in green, with the multiple lakes, and those pre-application meetings have been over the last 18 to 24 months.
That is extremely helpful, thank you so much, Mr. Benton.
Thank you.
Now, if we can go back to the, anybody has a, from the public, please, come forward now, now's your time to speak, or anybody you'd like to talk about? If you'd like anything to say about this project, welcome to come forward.
Did the applicant?
Chair Low, the applicant does have a presentation this evening.
Yeah.
One second.
Good evening, Lindsey Livis with WGI for the record. Business address is 2035 Vista Parkway, West Palm Beach. Before you tonight, I was here a couple months back. We're here to respectfully request a recommendation of approval to council for the Indrio Woods application. As Erin went over, we are requesting a rezoning to a PUD and preliminary site plan, and thank you, Erin and Cory, for the in-depth presentation and dialogue. We've been working closely with the staff and those community members who were willing to engage us over the last couple of months to make design changes. And I think is what you'll see on the subsequent slides is that we have made a better plan, which was the intent of the postponement, and so we do appreciate it because it was time well spent, and I think ultimately it's going to be a better community for St. Lucie County. So, I'm just going to walk through the changes and not be repetitive to anything we've presented in the past or with what Erin presented tonight, excuse me. All right, so the first concern, which is one of the reasons we were postponed, is not enough community engagement and outreach. We heard you loud and clear. We had an initial meeting back in May before we came here in June. That was actually our most well-attended community meeting. You'll see on subsequent bullet points that, as the meetings went on, participation became less. We had two in-person meetings, one on October 24th and one on November 8th. And we also heard at the last hearing or last board meeting that you all felt the 500-foot radius might not be sufficient, given the location. And so, we actually mailed out public notice for these meetings, 1,000 feet, so we doubled the radius requirement to try and capture more residents. And we also requested that the public notice be posted on the community Facebook page, which is the Fort Pierce Connection Unlimited. That was not accepted by the administrator, it never made it onto social media, but we did request it. That way, we could again have a broader reach to the community. Also, on the outreach letter, we set up an email address if people didn't want to call us directly or they wanted to submit some kind of anonymous comment or have a dialogue that way. It was indrio woods@wgi.com. As of this morning, there were no emails sent to that email address. There were approximately eight residents at the October 24th meeting and four residents at the November 8th meeting. Both of those meetings were held at the Lakewood Park POA. We sent out multiple certified mailers to the owners of the Binnie estate. We started this process well in advance of any public hearing. There were two certified mailers sent out in 2022, one was in May, just over a year of the first meeting. The second one was sent out in August 22nd, over nine months from our first public meeting. The first engagement we had, to my knowledge, with them was at the June hearing. There were also three, at least three more certified mailers sent out to them. The 20, September, October, November, the November was rejected, I believe, by maybe the owner, I'm sorry, the resident of the actual Binnie estate, and was returned. But we also sent them to the owner's address. So, another prior concern was the design will create negative impacts on the Binnie estate. And there's going to be graphics following these bullets, so you can visualize the changes that we've made. We flipped the recreation area, it was redesigned and relocated to the western portion of that property off of Indrio. The lake area was relocated to be directly adjacent to the Binnie estate. We had the clubhouse initially, and the pool area abutting that property line. We heard you at the last meeting, I believe somebody on the board might have suggested flipping that and having the water body next to the Binnie estate for additional buffering, we did do that. That's going to further the distance from the Binnie estate structure to any kind of recreational activity that the development generates. We also increased the landscape buffers internal to the site from 10 feet to 20 feet, so that entire U-shape, we doubled the buffer, in addition to relocating the water bodies and green space adjacent to that property line internal to our site. Building number one was reduced from two stories to three stories and relocated further away from the Binnie estate and back from Indrio Road to try and preserve some of that feel of the corridor, and the density was decreased by approximately 5%. We also, there's also a shed that was on our property that I believe belongs to the owners of the Binnie estate. We were asked to preserve it, and so we are keeping it on our site and have offered up an easement for access, and you'll see that on the other side. So, you've got a side-by-side, you have the previously proposed site plan, and then the revised site plan. You'll see the difference in the rec area. We flipped the pool and the clubhouse and the lake, and so now the water bodies, what, directly abuts? The adjacent property line. Everything in blue is essentially a buffer on top of the 20-foot buffer on the internal U-shape. You'll see that there are no structures or recreational activities directly abutting any portion of the property line that we share with the Binnie estate. We also reduced that building and reoriented it from two stories, I'm sorry, from three stories to two stories, and reduced the density and relocated that green space adjacent to Indrio Road. And in every instance, we increased setbacks from existing structures to the main structure on the Binnie estate. And that area to the south right there, that's the shed that we're preserving and will allow access via an easement. There was also a lot of talk about traffic and connectivity, and so after, this actually came out from the second neighborhood meeting we had, and speaking with the neighbors, there was talk about extending our ingress and egress roadway the entire length of the western property line south. We understand that it's not on an official right-of-way protection plan or future right-of-way map, but we understand the need for connectivity and to alleviate traffic in the future as these developments come online, and so we are reserving and offering up a 60-foot dedication the entire length, so in the future, should there be an option to connect to an existing roadway network, the infrastructure's in place, it's already on the plan. And we worked with the environmental team at St. Lucie County, this doesn't impact the preserve area, we still meet all of the requirements, and it's in a portion of the preserve area that is, the higher quality is to the east, and so it's not going to impact from an environmental standpoint or from a code standpoint, we still meet all regulations. And then we realigned the roadway on the southern portion to move it south away from the intersection of Indrio and Taylor Dairy. This is going to allow a better flow within the community and a better opportunity to alleviate traffic on Indrio and make traffic more functional on Taylor Dairy. And we removed all gates, there are no gates on either Indrio or on Taylor Dairy. And then we're also improving Taylor Dairy to the entire length of our property line. Before, we were just proposing to approve it to our entrance, but now we're going. Before, we were just proposing to approve it to our entrance, but now we're going the entire length of the property line. It's about 1,300 feet in length. And again, here's an aerial, I'm sorry, a graphic. You'll see those two entrances are completely open for our residents and for through traffic. So we've got that roadway, right now it's 60 feet, that's going to be developed as part of our property. On our site plan, we have a 60-foot ingress-egress reservation the entire length, gives the opportunity for future connection. We also realigned to the roadway. Before it would hook up, it was more north, and it was much closer to the intersection. And so by shifting it south, it not only allowed us to create more distance from the Andria and Taylor Dairy intersection, but it also allowed us to have some more flexibility with the design to move improvements away from Andria Road from an aesthetic standpoint. So before, our entrance was approximately 357 feet from the intersection. We shifted it down about 504 feet, and so now we're 861 feet away from the intersection. We're also improving the entire length of Taylor Dairy, just over 1,300 linear feet. The negative aesthetic impacts on Andria Road is another concern that we heard and we addressed. We are agreeing to preserve or replant as many oak trees as we can along the Andria Road corridor on the south side. We modified the architecture to be Old Florida. The building massing was shifted away from Andria Road, and we are dedicating an area up front for public art. We've talked with the St. Lucie County team on that. We have put an area for future, you know, location. We are open to working with the county. We would love a local artist to be involved in it. It's something that we're excited about. We think it'll be good not only for the community but for the corridor and those driving along Andria Road. And so that area, again, you'll see we reoriented the building, dropped it from three to two stories, and then we put the community garden adjacent to Andria. And so it's what you'll see here is there's no building that is adjacent to Andria. We tried to move everything away to keep it open. That's what we heard at the last hearing. They like the open feel. They don't want to see a building directly abutting the road, so we took that into serious consideration and made those modifications. There's about 194 feet of shoreline frontage on that lake on Andria, 163 to the east, and then 100 feet of open space frontage. So there's no frontage that involves a building directly on Andria. This graphic is kind of in line with what Cory just showed. You'll see along the corridor, the land use allows up to nine. I understand that that zoning varies, but the density of 8.4 units that we're proposing is not out of line with the corridor. You know, you have Cabo Rio next door. Our development is proposed at 8.4, but the majority of the corridor is intended to be developed at a similar intensity, so we feel as though we are in line with the intent of the code and with the intent of the corridor. Erin showed these conceptual elevations. I'll run through them with you. These are conceptual. We are going to work with staff and continue to refine these through the final approval process. Here are just a few details, again, conceptual. We really wanted to keep Old Florida style. We heard you last time that the image board we had was generic. We didn't take into account the actual feel of the area. So our team with our client went back to an architect and had these designed specifically for the site. This isn't a generic rendering. This was designed for the Andria Woods project, and it is something we intend to continue forward with and refine through the approval process. And the two-story building will be in line. There's not going to be any change in architectural style or design. We'll be sticking to the Old Florida, and the details will be very simpler, just a smaller massing and scale. And again, here is the final plan with all of the changes outlined. We meet all planning and zoning requirements. We are requesting no waivers or no variances. We're completely in line with the TBC and PUD guidelines, and like Erin indicated, we're 100% in agreement with the conditions of approval, and we are looking forward to moving forward. I appreciate, again, the time, the last couple of months. I hope you all agree that the plan is a better plan all the way around, and so the postponement period was time well spent. And so we also would like to thank the members of the community that were willing to engage us. We had some really good dialogue, and a lot of these changes are directly reflective of the comments and feedback they gave us. So thank you.
Thank you. Wait a minute. Any question from the staff? From the applicant? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public now that would like to speak regarding to this project? Please come forward. Your name and your address.
Yes, hi. My name's Dennis Jerkowitz. I'm 6701 Andria Road.
Thank you.
Benny Estate. We were talking about traffic. I was sitting on the porch between 4:00 and 5:00 this evening. There's a lot of traffic going up and down that road today. We got possible projects down the road. We got a lot of development, I believe, to the west, if I'm not mistaken. People will use that Andria Road to get to US-1, so you compound that all the way and the volume just increases. If I remember back 15, 20 years ago, there's a project that was going to be developed across the street from my address, and that failed, the traffic study 15, 20 years ago. Anyway, it's going to be a busy road. People go real fast in the mornings, and in the evenings, they have to go the speed limit because of so many cars. So. And I wanted to mention also, on the applicant's Page 18, they said their applicant has taken significant steps to preserve the native vegetation, and I don't know if that's on their plan when they're going to have to clearcut the entire 33 acres except for the seven in the south end that they've made for a preserve and put their ponds in and put their buildings up. I don't know how you would do that with all that thick oak trees, palm trees, natural vegetation, and that was a big concern of mine. We also have the concern of the view shed from that historic property. I have a few photos that we took last week from upstairs, looking out into what is a nice, big, thick view shed, and I'd like to show a couple of them to you if I can. This is from the facing west on the porch of the back of the house. It's very rural back there. That'll all be gone. There'll be pretty much a freestanding barn back there. Which we're concerned about construction and ground movement possibly having that fall down. This is to the viewing from the looking south. Again, the view shed is very thick and would disappear except for the six-foot wall, whatever in landscaping. This is Taylor Dairy Road a couple of days ago. Nice. Still rural, still beautiful. This is the morning looking east from the Benny estate. Will no longer be there, and this is just looking kind of south northwest, just the oak trees out by Andria Road. Shouldn't be affected. But I'm asking to please, if you could vote to not rezone this. AR1's fine. We would like to keep the charm of this community. I have a place in South Florida. I've surrounded down there by apartment buildings and traffic. I can't wait to get out of there sometimes and get up here and relax and say, it's beautiful here. Like to keep that. So I'd like you to vote no if you could.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Seacor. I'm a resident of Indian River County, 1155 Reef Road. I am here to advocate for a vote of no to this change. I like Commissioner Slack's proposal to have a global kind of overarching view of what you all have to do around here. You have a very difficult job. I don't envy you, but I think to step back and get an overview of what could happen to this place. The presentation we just saw, the rendering of that building, I don't know about y'all, but I don't see anything Old Florida in that representation of that building. Nothing of Old Florida that I know of. I am voting against the abominable desecration of a stunning piece of property and a historic building. I'm hoping that you will be exacting and respectful in your consideration of this very important proposal that's before you, and if you would forbear, I'd like to read you two little things that, to me, speak to kind of, I'm getting kind of philosophical here, so bear with me. The first one is, "This house is mine, but briefly while I live. It has been hearth and shelter and home to many gone, and what I do with it may not be entirely my own affair. Change is not always good, and dwellings of old deserve a need of reverence and care." The second one, "Every human dwelling is built with pride and purpose. For some part of its lifespan, it is lived in by those who love and cherish it. An old house, abandoned and falling to decay, on a lonely by-road or crowded into the background on a city street by modern buildings, awakens a desire to know something of its happier I hope that the Benny property will have many more happy years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward. Please be ready to speak, if you would.
Good evening. Jim Chalmers, Jason Property Cabo Rio. I think the tentative address is 5550 North Kings Avenue. Just want to weigh in on the, we had the opportunity to rezone. You know, I was in the same position. I had the property, and it wasn't guaranteed that I could rezone and do what I did. I was fortunate to do it. I think I was at just over five units an acre. You all mentioned compatibility, a sway in on compatibility. You know, we've approved, and we're under construction for a high-end resort, and I think compatibility, we had the opportunity to put like-kind and businesses that work well together for the TBC. It's a weird zoning. I navigated through it. I knew about it before I bought the property. I don't know how much the realtors disclosed it would be a challenging piece in the beginning. I looked at that property originally, and I think everything was pushing towards Taylor Dairy, you know? If you were to do it, I think, you know, they shouldn't have to give up land to put a road through there. I don't think that road's ever going to happen. It'd be kind of weird, but maybe everything's going to happen to have Taylor Dairy Egress and main entrance in a decent intersection of Taylor Dairy. And maybe if, you know, as a neighbor, just flipping that seven acres to buffer us, it would have to give more buffer to the Benny house. It might be a reasonable compromise and put the development closer to Taylor Dairy. So I don't think anything across the street on Taylor Dairy is going to happen, so that's my suggestion, just to consider, you know, compatibility. You know, my clients are, my clients are like, what's going on next door? And I have to disclose them, like, it's not for me. You know, I've given deposits back on properties because they're like, yeah, I don't want to come here and see that because they come up from South Florida and we're trying to get away from that. I think the property is going to get developed. I think it should, you know, but that's just my opinion, my suggestion. There's a solution, but it's a challenging area, and we're not guaranteed to get nine units, you know? It's not. That's up to the board as a whole, you know? So that's the chance we take when we buy these properties, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public. Please come, if you're going to speak, please be prepared to speak because we have to watch the time.
Okay. Janey Baugh, 6701 Andria Road, Benny Estate. I, I'm sorry, I'm not as prepared as I should be, but as Dennis stated, the number one thing is this will adversely affect our property and our view shed and the feeling that you get when you're on this historic property. And as I remember Ms. Slack stating before, that that's what you got when you went there. Unfortunately, the oak hammock has, part of it was cut down last week on the north side, and, but the property itself, as you saw from the pictures, still has that feeling. And I don't believe in the historic, the Land Development Code states that the historical commission will protect the feeling along with the property, the structures for that, and it doesn't seem like this, does it? Those photos, those pictures are from our balcony, and the lakes, I mean, they did make some nice changes, but it still takes all of that away. And those are, that's, you know, just looking out the window, and that's out the balcony.
Please speak up.
I'm sorry. Those are looking out the window and off the balcony, and we'll be looking at the lake and the buildings because there don't seem to be leaving any vegetation of the big trees. They're replanting, but that's, we'll see right over that, and it will take a long time, and it'll have that, I believe, when I, one of the meetings, we spoke to the planner for the, I'm sorry, the vegetation. They, and it's all set up like, and it's going to look like a country club setting, which is not where we are. It's not the kind of setting that we have there, and I don't see why they can't leave some of the trees, you know, on our border as well and not have that as well as, we're concerned about the noise because that will, the trees being gone will create a bigger noise factor. Also, the structural integrity, as I've mentioned before, of the house and the barn and our water source with, I mean, they have to be doing bulldozing to take out all of those trees and clear that land, which I think will be problematic for us as well as all of those things. And then they also seem to have their lift station right in the back there, so.
Thank you.
This historic designation, okay. Well, I mean, I think that, I'm sorry. I mean, we have applied for the historic designation we've received from the state of Florida, which we already have the master site file that indicates that it is historic. I have that here, that that's old. We received the designation here. It hasn't been official yet. I guess it's going to be at the next county commission meeting, and the state of Florida for the national registry has accepted our application. It hasn't gone through yet because we have to do all of the work, which is what I've been working so hard doing, and I feel a little disoriented today. I'm sorry. Too many questions for me.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Wayne Bennett, 4555 Taylor Dairy Road, Fort Pierce, and I think my biggest concern is the traffic conditions that are going to be there and the rules pertaining to the TBC. I'd like some clarification on them, maybe. I gave some flyers. I know they were not very timely, but I hope you had time to read a little of it. I've tried to highlight in here my concerns, and St. Lucie County will not approve any construction or development of land that would interfere with the creation or improvements of the streets identified in the future street network plan specifically for the TBC. Appropriate connectivity of new development to these streets and their integration with adjoining development must be demonstrated prior to development approvals. Now, I understand that we've got an ingress and exit right-of-way set aside, but is it public? This is what I don't know. We also, we have these streets, one of them will be coming in on the south end of this project. project, and there's only three TVC parcels that, you know, for construction in this intersection, and it says they have to be interconnected. How's that going to be done? Streets must be designed to encourage pedestrian and bicycle travel. I would like to see this Deleon Avenue extended, and instead of a right turn, focus on getting it aligned so that people can use it to go north or south into the shopping center or wherever they might want to go, instead of having this right turn. I don't know who's going to police this right turn. I don't think it'll happen. I think people are going to pull out there and make a U-turn in the middle of that intersection or Taylor Dairy Road or these other places that they have mentioned. There is another project that's, I know under somewhat of a review that's directly south of Cabo Rio, and I think it's on my brochure there. If that comes into play, then that needs to be interconnected, because that roadway A comes through that property. I think that this road could serve a lot of other people. I'd like to be ensured that this easement for ingress and egress and all the roads located on-site of this project will be dedicated to public use, so they can be connected as this other line, other place comes online and other properties that are going to be developed to the south. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Could you wait?
Good evening. I'm Robert Dooling. I live at seventy-two oh one Santa Rosa Parkway. I've got five pieces of property that were, are within a mile of there. The project's better than what it was, but it's still basically lipstick on a peg. The traffic concerns are real. You know, all the shopping is west of there. People are going to be coming out wanting to go west. It's a two-lane road. Everything down there is too late. Project doesn't fit with the neighborhood. My question to the nice young lady from West Palm Beach is, how many mailers did you have in your thousand-foot radius? Well, was it more than three hundred or more than fifty or ballpark? Yeah, the ones you mailed out.
Chair.
Sir, please speak to us.
Okay. I'm just trying to find out how many she sent out, because she makes it sound like there's no opposition to it. I don't think there's a whole lot of people within a thousand feet that were notified as property owners. There's not a lot of people living that close. My second question is, what is your property value going to change if you increase this to nine units an acre from what it's, you've been paying taxes on, on that parcel for the last fifty years? And to say that there's not going to be any impact is, that's just ludicrous. I live there. You can't get out of Lakewood Park in the morning. Plus, you're going to have, how many units? How many kids is that? Bus stops? No traffic light? Yeah, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. If I, and if I wanted to live in West Palm Beach, hell, I'd move there. And as far as it being historical, I don't need the national registry to tell me what's historical in St. Lucie County. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one. That property's historical, there are people who live in that area. I'm not much for talking in public, so I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, end on that note. But I am curious as to what the property value change is.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, the gentleman I have a question for. The gentleman that just spoke, could you please come back to the mic? Sir, did you attend the October or the November neighborhood meetings? What were the results of those meetings? Could you tell us?
The results of what meetings?
The October and November neighborhood meetings.
I attended one, no, I attended one meeting here, the last planning and zoning meeting, not the one that was delayed, the one before that. The neighborhood meetings I never heard about, and I just heard about this meeting because I read the sign on the Bennie Estate two days ago that says the next meeting is this date and I came.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's just, the notification is kind of a problem, and it's like people feel like they're getting worn out. Drag me to a meeting, come to another meeting, it gets delayed, come to another meeting. Fortunately, I'm old and got some spare time, but people that are working in the county, they don't have time to come to fifty meetings on this. It's just a bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak? Anybody like to speak for you? Thank you.
I just want to make a couple clarifying statements, if the board is open to that. The sixty-foot proposed ingress egress, well, first of all, Mr. Bennett and I and our team worked together, and it was his suggestion and, and concern that the future connection wouldn't be viable without designating it on the plan now. So we put it on the plan. It is public. It will be public, for, at which time it needs to be improved. Also, I don't have the exact number of mailers, but that's why we doubled the radius. We doubled it from five hundred to a thousand. We also request to put it on the community Facebook page, and the administrator never accepted the request. We've gone over and beyond notification of residents. We set up emails. We tried to put on social media. We doubled the radius. I don't know what else we could do in terms of notifying the community. They're very well-connected. I'm sure there was an opportunity to let everybody know what time this meeting was, and I feel like we've done everything we can.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. Please step back to the mic. Could you tell me what, in your opinion, what the results were for the October and the November neighborhood meetings?
In terms of design changes?
Well, let's just say the attendance.
We had about eight people at the first meeting, and we had four people at the second.
Were they for or against?
The, I was not, I had a family emergency. I did not attend the first one, but on the second one, it was very collaborative. I felt like it was a good meeting. And honestly, most of these design changes came out of those meetings. They're a direct reflection of our conversations with the residents. From the ingress egress on the west side of the property to the realignment on Taylor Dairy, to the, to the reorientation of the rec area, we listened to them and we made design changes. The, the alternative of nothing going on that property isn't a viable option. We have done everything we can to accommodate community concerns while still understanding that this property is going to be developed. It's going to be developed. And so we feel like we did everything we could to accommodate concerns to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
And I know this board, at this last meeting, we made a lot of requests that you make change some of the changes, and you accepted them.
We did, and we're proud of the plan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Ma'am?
Ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a question for you and the owners of Bennie, and it concerns the shed.
How big is the shed? What's, what's the size of it?
I don't know. It's kind of stuck in the, in the vegetation, but I think it's twenty, maybe twenty by twenty. It is an original milking barn from the Bennie Estate. It's part, it's made with some of the same materials on the property.
Is it on a concrete slab?
It is. It's got a tin roof. It's kind of buried in there, but it is historic, and it is part of the property there.
It's not on your property, it's on theirs?
Correct.
How far off of your property is it?
There's a ditch. We're very concerned what's going to happen with that ditch also, because if they're building what they're building here, that ditch is gone. Where does that water go? That's the water that leaves my property out. It's going to disappear. And as far as the certified letter, you have to sign for certified letters. I've never signed for a certified letter. No letters were ever delivered to my address, period.
What would it take to move?
One was out of the.
What would it take to move that building?
I don't know.
Twenty by twenty's not very big.
It's, it, I don't know. It's was, it's been there for a hundred and, hundred years.
It'd fall down if you tried to move.
It probably would.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, we're letting them keep their shed on our property and, and offering an easement, so I just want that to be restated for the record.
They've got access to it and everything.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing none. I think nobody else. We'll close the public comments. And go back to the board, discussion. Is there one more project? Please come forward if you have. You spoke already?
Yes, sir. I'd just like clarification that all the streets and roadways are going to be dedicated to the public.
Yes, Ms., yes.
Mr. Ben?
It will be.
Yes.
Chair, low members of the commission, it's our understanding that it would be dedicated in the form of an easement, where the, the county would not take ownership of the land, but would have rights to access, improve and utilize that, should there be a public need or benefit. In discussions with our public works team, it's likely, should there be a demand for use of it, it would be a part of a petition for development of land to the south, that that private developer would propose improvement, and then there would be a joint arrangement for maintenance, absent the county's direct involvement. However, dynamics change, public resources change. If, if there's a global public benefit, that, that could transition. The county would have the easement rights to, to proceed if, if it warranted it.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't think I understood that, Corey. Are we speaking strictly to the open easement that she's noting on the plans as ingress egress? Or are we speaking about, I'm speaking from Indrio Road all the way south. Is that going to be turned over to the county for maintenance and public use?
It, it would not be turned over to the county for ownership and maintenance, to, to my knowledge. There would be access rights granted to the county in, in public, and the development would not be gated, but at, at this time, the county has, at least staff has not indicated any interest in, in acquiring the land and, and causing maintenance of it. In the short term, it would only serve this development. Long term, that, that could change, and the policymakers could provide an alternative arrangement.
Is there an avenue for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm looking at the street network design specifically of the TVC, three oh one point oh three GG, and Article Four in that, it says, "All streets must be publicly dedicated. Private streets and closed or gated streets are prohibited," notwithstanding the provisions of Section seven point oh five oh three E and seven point one oh point one five. Can you clarify that for me?
Chair Loh, assuming the commission would indulge, what's on screen is an exhibit from the TVC adopted Conference of Plan Element, in which the future street network identifies primary public corridors. Here in purple, we have King's Highway. Indrio Road is running east-west, the, the top end of the dashed black line. The property subject to tonight's petition is at the far northeast corner in shade. The planned street, East West Road, in red, would extend east of King's Highway to Taylor Dairy, but south of this petition site. What's proposed by the applicant this evening is a private driveway that would serve this development coming from Indrio Road south, and they're proposing an access easement to allow for the extension of that and allowing for this driveway or private street to be open to the public for use. And one of the concepts could be, if the, if and when the street extends from King's Highway east to Taylor Dairy, that there would be a private street connection north and south in dashed orange, should the policymakers, in coordination with development further to the south, and should this project proceed, the county is anticipated to have an option, should they elect to acquire the land and/or wish to maintain that for public use. We'd have that latitude, but it's our intent for it to be open to the public, but privately developed and privately maintained.
And up?
I guess that's it. Got it on the record.
Thank you. Anybody else? Close the public. Back to the board for a discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Benton and staff, we have talked previously on these, at this issue about having Deleon extended south to county property. Is that a dead issue?
Vice Chair Lowndes, members of the commission, I, I would say no, sir. I think there are design challenges in the short term of facilitating a full access intersection at Indrio for what's proposed as a private driveway today in the existing street to the north that is dead end, and it services the commercial center. However, long-term, as, as we noted earlier, there can be design strategies, use of existing right-of-way, potentially future acquisition of right-of-way, particularly on the north side of Indrio Road, to provide for modification in that alignment, whether that's shifting the existing portion of Deleon or Royal Palm to the east and offset roundabout. I'll use the example at Sunrise Boulevard and Ohio Avenue and Oleander in Fort Pierce, ways to, to accept traffic from various angles and routing movements. There's, there's a lot of strategies. What this plan looks to do is offer that opportunity within control of the property within this boundary before you this evening. When the right-of-way was not acquired via the review of Cabo Rio to the west, that alignment north and south with the existing right-of-way could not be achieved. Again, that, that north-south link was not on the county's right-of-way protection plan or map. Today, it's still not on. This is an offering of the applicant based upon public feedback and, and this forum.
Mr. Benton, what would be the chances of the Fort Pierce or St. Lucie County Historical Society, I'm sorry, Historical Society figuring out a way to move this shed?
Of Vice Chair Lowndes, members of the commission, I wouldn't begin to speculate what, what a nonprofit organization would, would be able to facilitate, you know, as, as presented, a, a few things, if, if I may. There is an active petition by the owners of the Edwin Bennie Estate to pursue a local designation on our local register. That meeting would be before the Historical Commission on January ninth, here in this chamber, it's about four PM. In the background, we received a letter from the Port St. Lucie Historical Society requesting that the local, our county Historical Commission proceed with a designation unilaterally for designation of the Edwin Bennie Estate. That matter, which coincides with the, the private request, will also be on that same docket in early January. If the, the property is designated and we're considering that the, the private holdings outside of this petition site, that could change the, the regulatory dynamics of even moving a structure. Sometimes it's, it's ill-advised to relocate historic structures unless it would not adversely impact the original development pattern or context. Moving it thirty-five to forty-five feet may not propose any conflicts with the Secretary of Interior standards. What the applicant has, has offered this evening during this public hearing is to locate their development improvements to the west, to the south and to the east of that shed, which per the survey is closer to twenty by sixteen feet in, in perimeter, or at least dimensions, and offer an easement for access to the owner of the Bennie Estate, both from a design and consideration standpoint, that would allow for the, the estate's campus to essentially remain intact and incorporate that accessory structure. But relocating it with, with private, private efforts, building permits, other challenges, cost associated with it, if, if there's geographic impediments such as a ditch, it, it makes that more of a feat.
Ain't nothing impossible. It just seems to me that if, if powers-to-be could figure out a way to eat some apple pie and ice cream and come together and move that damn shed, then it solves the owner's problem, that he's got his shed back where it could be, and it alleviates the easement and people wanting to go publicly to this shed for whatever reason in the future. I, I'd like to see some kind of consideration with that. We're, we're, what, thirty feet off the property line?
Vice Chair Lowndes, I, I would speculate it's in the ballpark of thirty to forty feet. I think to, to clarify, the shed's ownership is the, the petitioner this evening. Lawfully in acquiring the, the land around the Edwin Bennie Estate, they, they are the, the owner of that structure, and the, the offering this evening is an access easement. Sure, the terms of that would need to be laid out, any liability coverage, particularly if, if this becomes a public venue, and if there were to be some type of footbridge or- if this becomes a public venue, and if there were to be some type of footbridge or pedestrian access across that swale or ditch. There's a lot of potential options. It's staff at this point, whether there's the access easement and rights granted to the Binney Estate owner or relocation of it. We can encourage the applicants represented to weigh in on that, but I think staff wouldn't have a particular opinion based upon the accommodations being offered, and we would have to evaluate the historic preservation component. Again, today, these structures are on our local survey of historic resources, but they are not locally designated. If they become locally designated, that could change who needs to evaluate proposals such as relocation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other motion?
I've got a quick one. If this was put on the historic registry, would it have any effect on this project being up for consideration?
I think qualitatively, there's certainly some consideration as to adverse effects on adjacent property. That's one of the standards of review in considering a rezoning. And, you know, I think that the staff's submitted report, whether the property central is on the local register or not, that the modifications in the plan, the open space buffering and the screening that's offered, provide separation from the site to avoid adverse effects or minimize any adverse effects that might be perceived.
And then just a couple of points. I think the plan changes are good, and I still would prefer lower density, but I think they made a pretty decent compromise. At the same time, doubling their buffer to 20 feet around the Binney Estate's good. You can't get buffers, berms, and stuff without possibly taking down some vegetation and putting some filter in there. You also can't get upset because your neighbor's going to cut trees down on the neighbor's property when your property itself doesn't have those trees either. So, I can see both sides, but from the Binney Estate side, it looks like a lot of their property doesn't have the big trees on it. So, to get upset because your neighbor who owns those big trees wants to do something with them or change their property, it's, I mean, you can't have your cake and eat it too, either. I think the buffers make sense. Most of your traffic's going to go out Taylor Dairy anyways, probably, especially if they ever improve and block off that Indrio entrance up there, where you can't make a left turn out, because everyone's going to be working down south. There's not a lot of jobs really on Indrio and US-1 right now that I can think of. So, in, I'd motion to approve with the changes that the board did, or the, with all the conditions and stuff that staff recommended.
Before we go forward with that, I have some comments. Mr. Bennett, are you making the motion, or?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, can we hold for just one minute, please? All right, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I think WGI has done a fantastic job re-aligning the buildings, the roadways, the lakes, the buffers, coming up with this easement concept along the west side. They've addressed so many different comments, and I applaud you for these great changes that you've made. You really, really have improved this plan significantly, and I do appreciate the fact that that southeast corner of the property is the most densely vegetated, and you are preserving that. That is great. So, two recommendations that I would make, that with the board's agreement, I might put forward, and we can discuss them. The first is, there's a standard buffer that you are talking about around the perimeter of the Binney Estate. And like Mr. Bennett said, in order to build a berm and all of this vegetative screening, there's a lot of reshaping of landforms that takes place, that clears out trees. I would consider that the Environmental Resources Department, the property owner, and the adjacent neighbors, I would recommend that the three parties come together, walk this site, and determine what's going to be under the lake, what's going to be left between the property line and the lake, and can any of that be preserved as an alternative to building the berm? And would that make everyone happy? Would you end up with a denser vegetative buffer by leaving well enough alone and not building the berm? So, if you guys go out in the field, bring your pink flagging, mark out all the trees that would remain, get your surveyor out there with the tree survey, and really go through this with a fine-tooth comb, it's those little details that can make the difference between this being successful and having everyone feel like they came away with some form of winning this difficult struggle, okay? I really think that you guys can solve this problem together, and then there will be consensus and neighborliness, and that's really what we want ultimately for our community. So, get out there with the tree survey and the neighbor, and don't push this forward until you guys have come to consensus on that. I really think you can work this out, and it is the property owner's property. It is not the Binney Estate's property, but in the interest of neighborliness, ERD, property owner, and Binney Estate owner really need to come together, be neighbors, and figure it out. And if everybody decides that the best thing really is a berm and new vegetation, so be it. Okay, so that's my easy recommendation.
We would accept that.
Okay, that's my easy recommendation. The second one is going to be a lot harder to swallow, and I don't know if this will work for everyone. However, the realignment of all the buildings was really well done, and I think that you're right on the money there. You're still getting a ton of pushback from the neighbors and from the people of Lakewood Park about incompatibility, incompatibility between Binney and the buildings, incompatibility between the buildings and Lakewood Park in general, where there's nothing over two stories, right? And building one is two stories, you're right on the money there, but buildings three, four, five, six, and seven, and two, are all three stories. So, you get 16 units in building one, 54 in building two, 39 in building three, 42 in building four, 39 in building five, 42 in six and seven both, for a total of 274 units. A lot of units, a lot of residents, a lot of cars, a lot more density. So, that's where you get your eight-plus dwelling units per acre. I haven't worked out the percentages in dwelling units for this, but what I would recommend would be to hold it to two stories. And that drops you from 274 units total to 188 units total. Buildings with 54 units become 36. Buildings with 42 units become 28. Buildings with 39, you know, and so forth. I think I have those numbers right? Yeah. 39 becomes 26, 54 becomes 36, 42 becomes 28, and you end up with a total of 188 units for the development. And that's a significant reduction. I recognize that, and I don't know whether that makes it financially infeasible or not, but it does go the last step of the way to bringing the buildings into compatibility with the surrounding context, with all of Lakewood Park, with a respect for that density, the existing density and volumetric relationships of buildings to buildings and how tall things are. A two-story building certainly speaks a different language than a three-story. Two-story tends to look more like home, if you would, and less like apartment block. And you guys have done a very nice job articulating the buildings and stepping the facade in and out, and having balconies, and dormers, and metal roofs, and lanterns, and cupolas. You've done such a lovely job articulating it. It may not speak old Florida, but it's a nicely modulated facade that really helps bring the scale of the building down. Nonetheless, a three-story building that's that long looks very different from a two-story building that's that long, and that could be the difference, I think, between acceptance and not.
Thanks, Slack.
And so...
I think you got your point.
Yeah. Sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay, since this is on a rezoning, I'll second the motion.
He withdrew.
The motion was withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
Yeah, so she can make the comments.
I had a comment before we move on, or at least just a brief explanation of where my head's at with, when it comes to a vote. I think I've maintained my position over the past, oh, it's the third meeting that we've had on this, and I've looked at everything, tried, I've tried to take out the emotion that's tied to the Binney Estate, and frankly, whether it's considered historic or not, doesn't really matter. It means something to this community, but I tried to take that factor out and, you know, put a normal, you know, concrete block house in its place, that's a single-family home, in that piece of property, and see if I would still come to the same conclusion, and I do. I commend WGI and staff, and you've really gone above and beyond with the changes that we've requested, and it's, you know, we're miles away from that crap that you tried to present us, present to us two meetings ago, and I appreciate all that effort, but the, at the end of the day, I'm looking at 274 units in this residential AR-1 neighborhood, and I can't get to a place where that makes sense to me. I've come to terms with the beauty of the property out there, and, you know, I've come to terms with it's probably going to be developed, and I'm okay with that, but I can't get behind nine dwelling units, an acre, on that property. And I know that's what it's allowed, and the eight-point-whatever, you know, big whoop, that's not something I can support at that extreme of a density on that property in that neighborhood. So, that's where I'm at. I just wanted to point that out.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Saying none is a motion? Is there a motion? Anybody like to make a motion?
Where it's open.
Okay. I propose that, I move that we recommend approval, subject to all staff comments and requirements, and a reduction in the number of dwelling units from 274 to 188 total units following the site plan shown, with the additional coordination required between property owner, Environmental Resources Department of St. Lucie County, and the owners of the Binney Estate to coordinate preservation of existing landscape, wherever it is adjacent to the Binney Estate's property line, between that property line and the nearest lake or site improvement that involves any kind of pavement or landform.
Second.
Discussion.
Second, any other discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we have one of our attorneys here tonight? Are we able to make that kind of a motion? Because, I mean, that significantly changes the density, and that's completely different than what's presented. Are we able to even do that?
I'd like to ask a question first.
Proving a different project.
What the develop, what they've requested tonight, does that match the county's ordinance in what you can do with this property to begin with? What they've applied for?
Chair Loh, members of the Commission, staff has submitted a report and a recommendation of approval with conditions, submitting that this design plan and requested rezoning are consistent with the county's Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. As to the inquiry, as to the latitude of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this body has the opportunity to recommend approval as presented, approval with parameters and conditions, approval with recommended changes, as well as recommendation of denial. Again, it's a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So, as presented, whether the board or the applicant look favorably upon that type of recommendation that would notably change the density of a project, that's to the policymakers.
What does that bring the density to? Do you know that?
We took 188 units, I believe I heard from Commissioner Slack, at about 32 and a half acres, just shy of 5.8 units per acre.
What is the density at Cabo Rio?
Chairman Loh, if I were to speculate as to the acreage of Cabo Rio, at about 28 acres and 146 sites, about 5 to 5.2, I would distinguish the projects in that that is intended more tourist-related transient accommodations as opposed to residential units for more long-term leases. What I would acknowledge, and I, just speaking globally, we're going to be talking about the towns, villages, and countryside even more, there is the ability in the TVC for land that's preserved and that's environmentally sensitive land to transfer or proposed transfer of density to other receiving sites. In the TVC element, this region and this area was actually intended as a potential receiving site because it's in close proximity to commercial and not too far from the institutional uses of school and the fire station, and along the jobs corridor of King's Highway. But in theory, if there were any density units on the table as prescribed in the TVC element, some of those units could be proposed to be transferred off-site and potentially with a multiplier. But again, it's just added notes.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Did the motion fail? If not, we need to vote on it.
We haven't voted on it yet.
I know that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I agree that this developer has gone way far beyond reason to make this project work. I like their changes. My heartburn is not with the development itself as presented tonight with its changes. It still goes back to the infrastructure problems on Indrio Road. It adds to the congestion that's going to be on Indrio Road. It's going to add with this project and the other two that are coming that we don't have any voice in, it's going to add to it. I'm fighting myself deeply about either voting for or against it based on the Indrio Road traffic problem, not with the design of it. This county needs this type of development. Whether we agree that it needs to be here or wherever, this county needs this type of development because we need multifamily units here, and I like this development now better than it was to begin with. I wish I could get some input, Mr. Bennett, as to how we're going to improve Indrio Road. Is it still going to go to the state in the future?
Vice Chair Lowndes, members of the Commission, again, as we saw from the investment of DOT in a multi-phase program on King's Highway, they've improved Turnpike Peter Road north of Indrio with turn lanes, sidewalks, the intersection has been expanded, turn lanes, Indrio Road west of King's Highway, it's been widened in certain sections, signalized intersections improved, expansion elements provided for in that capital improvement project. To my knowledge, the county does not have any slated improvements for roads east of King's Highway on Indrio Road. However, as noted, there's the investment planned in a north county wastewater water facility, depending upon growth and development activities. There's the test of concurrency for new development projects, there's impact fee revenue, and then, of course, the capital improvements planning that the county engages in. I can't commit to when and how. The improvements would be warranted in this particular area. These links, these adjacent links of Indrio Road are within the level of service range of a C or a D, so they're not failing at this So, they're, they're not failing at this stage. The traffic impact report would be required prior to final action on a development order for this site or sites along this corridor. So, there, there's some competing facets, but definitely something that, that our staff is evaluating as projects are proposed.
I can see a lot of U-turns on Indrio Road east of De Leon Road. I can see a lot of U-turns coming. And, and I ain't comfortable with that sport.
Mr. Chair, can we call the, the question on the table here? We've, we've got a motion and a second. I think we need to.
Go ahead.
Please.
We need to call that.
And the motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Slack made the motion.
Yes.
Our second.
Motion to call the vote.
Mr. Neese.
Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Neese?
Uh, no ma'am.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bridgers?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowes?
No, ma'am.
Chair Lowe?
Yes, ma'am. Approved. Thank you. Moving on to 9B. Kings Gate Center self-storage. Ty Curry going to present it? Hey Cory.
Good evening, Chair.
I know you, you'll be working with the, with the people, getting those, some of those questions that were brought up finalized, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Yes, good evening, Chair. Ty-Hear Curry for the record with the Planning and Development Services Department. Agenda item 9B is a conditional use petition to allow the development of a four-story self-storage building with office space totaling 124,200 square feet within the Kings Gate Center PNRD on Lot 3. A major site plan and plat application accompanies this conditional use petition, which will require approval by the Board of County Commissioners, but we are just meeting on the conditional use for tonight. In accordance with public notice requirements, the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 110003, it was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on December 1st, 2023, and mailed out notices to property owners within 500 feet and a prop, and a sign on the petition site. Notices were mailed out to 14 property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The planning department did not receive any responses. Here is an area of the site outlined in red. The overall 11.41 acre commercial subdivision is located on the southwest corner of Orange Avenue and King's Highway on the intersection and consists of a Wawa convenience store. The self-storage facility is proposed on Lot 3 of Kings Gate Center commercial subdivision, which plans to subdivide the 3.27 acre parcel into a 1.5 acre parcel that will be the subject site where the self-storage will occupy, and the remain, remainder of the parcel will be 1.86 acre parcel. The site is zoned plan non-residential development, and the surrounding properties consist of industrial light and commercial general zoning districts. Just to provide you with a little history of Kings Gate Center, it was rezoned from RM11 to plan non-residential development, and the Wawa was approved. That was back in 2019, and that was known as Kings Gate Center when it was approved through the PNRD process. In 2021, Kings Gate Center plat was recorded. In 2023, in April of 2023, Wawa received Tesla electric vehicle charging stations for the Wawa. And September of 2023, y'all may remember this, we allowed self-storages as a conditional use. So, it went through a major adjustment to the plan non-residential development to include self-storages within Kings Gate Center PNRD. Here's the site plan. The plan consists of 124,200 square foot building with 123,300 square feet of storage, consisting of 337 storage units, 900 square feet of office space. The storage facility will have a office entrance at the northeast corner of the building and building access at the south entrance. The site will provide eight parking spaces, a loading zone under the vehicle portico to protect customers from weather conditions and buffer the loading zone from the access easement from the ongoing traffic to the east, a bicycle rack, dumpster enclosure, on-site landscaping, and sidewalk connectivity. The plan will provide sidewalk connectivity from Wawa to the subject site, in addition to the future Kings Gate Center Park. And also the future, the subject site that says proposed Lot 32 will provide a sidewalk in front of the proposed parcel. Developers will construct a six-foot internal sidewalk that will connect the site internally and also a crosswalk connection to the multi-use path along Orange Avenue to the north. This is the architectural designs of the building. The proposed four-story building would have an average height of 45 feet with 48 feet in height overall, over the entrance parapet with, uh, which, which is within the approval of Kings Gate, which have a maximum height of 50 feet, so will not exceed that. The building design will meet the community architectural standards in accordance with Section 71024, providing at least five architectural features. Some of the features will include vertical rectangular windows, clear glass windows, 88% light transmission or more, display windows, raised parapets over the doors, standing steam metal roof, canopies and awnings, and also vehi- vehicle portico, vehicular portico, I'm sorry. And it shows the north elevation that will be facing Orange Avenue to the top left-hand corner. To the bottom left-hand corner shows the east elevation that will be facing King's Highway. Also, to the, to top right-hand corner will be the, the rear of the building. And also, it would show the north elevation to the bottom right-hand corner that will be facing.
How can it face north and face Orange Avenue?
I'm sorry, but, um, this will be facing west, my apologies. That was a little mix-up.
So, that faces the adjacent property to the west?
Yes, yes, that's the stone-mot building that's going, that's under construction right now.
Thank you.
The South Florida Logistics Building. The landscape is a snapshot of the landscape plan, the site will be providing building foundation plantings along the building and landscaping along proposed access road and easement, consistent with Section 70900 and Section 71024. The site will include trees along the western perimeter of the property for screening. Developer will contribute wayfinding and bench seating amenities to the future Kings Gate Center Park, providing connectivity and interaction with the park area. You see the highlighted in yellow, they will contribute bench and wayfinding. That was per the original approval with Kings Gate Resolution 2019 264, Number 7. Each development that comes in, they have to provide a contribution to the park. Their contribution is providing wayfinding and bench seating. The subject site will generate 11, as far as the trip generations, 11 a.m. peak hours, six entering, five exiting, and 19 p.m. peak hours, nine entering, 10 exiting. Kings Gate Center consists of three existing driveways, one right end, one right out driveway on Orange Avenue, one right in, right out driveway on King's Highway, and one full-access driveway on Orange Avenue to access the storage facility. That's the one to the west, that's a full ax- for access driveway. The previous analysis for Kings Gate demonstrates the adjacent impacted railways have sufficient capacity available to support the proposed project trips and intersection of Orange Avenue and King's Highway, Orange Avenue and I- I-95 southbound ramps, and Orange Avenue and I-95 northbound ramps will operate acceptable for the development. For Wawa, which was accounting for the additional lots when this originally came in back in 2019 for the approval. So, the analysis was done in traffic when this property have come, came in. Also, they did provide another updated analysis for the updated self-storage facility. Just to highlight a little bit of King's Highway, some development that's going on. Recently, as you all may know, King's Highway received, the roadway was reconstructed on King's Highway, some of the development that is taking place. As you see, it says the South Florida Logistics Warehouses, that's be to the west of Kings Gate Center site. To the right of the site, what would be east of the site was the King House, King Highway warehouses that was recently completed, and also a lot of development is taking place, such as growing communities such as Morningside, that's west on Orange Avenue, new communities that will be coming in, that's west on Orange Avenue, west of the subject site, Sunny Land Farms, Droughty Angle Road Residential, that's north. So, it's a lot of development that's taken place along King's Highway recently. Here are the standards of review as far as the conditional use. If it's consistent with the local code and comprehensive plan, will it have any impacts on adjacent properties? As you mentioned, most of the properties that's surrounding this is industrial commercial sites. Adequacy to public facilities, it will have water and sewer connection to FPUA, drainage, parks, also adequacy to fire protection. It is a fire station not too far from the subject site, and any environmental impacts to the subject site. That's what we reviewed during the conditional use process. Staff recommendations, staff recommends that this petition be forwarded to the Board, Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval subject to the following conditions. Wall sign or ground sign shall require review with the planning department before issuance of the building permit. Number two, 100% gopher tortoise survey shall be conducted. All category invasive plants shall be eradicated from the site. Number four, resurfacing of the existing private drive access roadway north of the subject site, which is along Kings Gate, one of the existing access aisles shall be resurfaced due to some disrepair that happened over time during construction. The applicant owner developer shall contribute the wayfinding signage and park benches that was shown in the landscape slot. Is making sure that they do that contribution. Also, a subdivision improvement agreement and appropriate bonding is required for the plating of Lot 3. A site development permit is required prior to performing any site improvement and activities through Public Works Department. That concludes staff presentation. If y'all have any questions, staff and the agents representatives are able to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I got one.
Yes.
The retention pond on the southwest corner, is that enough water retention? Since this lot is, it looks like basically completely covered by building and parking? Is that going to be enough water retention if the other, if all these lots are built out?
Yes, during the, when it came in in 2019, it was, this, when the site was evaluated for the potential impacts, that was calculated into the potential site for stormwater, making sure each lot can handle the stormwater flow.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the mean height of the South Florida Logistics Building, just for perspective? Does anybody know that?
I believe it's around 45, 46 feet or so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from staff? Yes, slave.
What is on the north side of Orange Avenue across the way from this project?
It's, oh, it's currently a vacant site right now. I'm going to it, currently a vacant site. And that's just a stout, I'm sorry, Florida department, a transportation pond. But the site to the north is mainly agriculture-based, but the site is zoned commercial, but it's vacant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here, everything? Please come forward.
Steve Dobbs, 209 Northeast Second Street, Okeechobee, Florida, representing the applicant. I don't really have anything to say or anything to add. You know, enjoyed working with your staff, Chairman Lowe and board members. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? You're clear?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's open to the public now. Anybody from the public, anything to come forward? Would like to talk about it, make a motion or, or make a, talk about it? Seeing none, we'll close the public, take it back to the board for a motion or recommendation?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Lowes.
I move that we have approved with the staff conditions of approval.
Does Mr. Lowes make move for approval?
Second. Second.
Second. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Mr. Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor?
My wife's going to kill me because she's tired of seeing so many storage units, but this is actually a good spot for it, so I'll say yes.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bridgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowes?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Lowe?
Yes, ma'am.
Pass.
9C Peter Rose Storage.
We have just one more storage facility coming up.
We know about the storage business now, right?
Yeah, I've been looking at that. I think Americans have too much junk to store.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you're everywhere.
I'll go ahead and jump into this presentation. Again, Ty-Hear Curry for the worker. Agenda item C is a conditional use petition to allow the development of 20,000 square foot single storage, self-storage building with office. A minor site plan application accompanies this conditional use. The minor site plan will, if this is approved, the minor site plan goes to the director. In accordance with public notice requirements of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on December 1st, 2023, mailed out notices sent out to 39 property owners within 500 feet and a sign placed on the petition site. Here is an area of the subject site outlined in red. There's two parcels, but combined, the 1.47 acre site is located east of Turnpike Peter Road, approximately 430 feet north of Miramar Avenue at 4, it's 5010 and 5014, Turnpike Peter Road in Fort Pierce, Florida. The subject site is zoned commercial neighborhood with the surrounding properties zoned commercial neighborhood, commercial general to the south, residential multifamily 5 and 9 to the south and east of the subject site. the south and east of the subject site. In accordance with the land development code, under commercial neighborhood zoning districts, three oh one oh three, self-storage facilities is limited to enclosed storage, single story in height, and is intended to serve a population living in surrounding neighborhoods, and is listed as a conditional use within the commercial neighborhood zoning district. Here's a snippet of the subject site. So, again, it's a twenty thousand square foot, single story building consisting of six single story buildings with an office, building A. The site will be served by five parking spaces, virtual man access control gate, bicycle, rack, dumpster enclosure, and landscaping. The site provides a five-foot wide pedestrian path, I'm sorry, a five-foot pedestrian access to the buildings for safe loading zone and unloading. The plan will provide existing, the site will improve the existing sidewalk access within the access easement to provide connectivity to both parcels. Development will construct a five-foot sidewalk to connect to the proposed building A. The applicant proposes a fee in lieu of in constructing sidewalks along Abeka Drive. The site access will be one right in, one right out, with sheer access easement to Turnpike Feta Road. The property to the south consists of a mobile gas station, undunked cafe, so we share that existing access easement with that parcel to the south. This is just some snippet of the architectural elevations of the subject site. Proposed single story building has an average height of just a little under twenty feet in height. The thirty-five feet is max within the commercial neighborhood zoning district, so will be under that. The building does meet the commercial architectural standards, the seven-ten-twenty-four, providing at least six architectural features because parking is located in the front. So, some of the features will include, if you look on the north elevation, this will be facing Turnpike Feta Road, Bahamas shutters, square columns, standing seam metal roof, canopy awnings, stone and stamped concrete pave at the project entry along the office. And also some other features that they may have, well, they will have as well along the Once again, these are the standards of review. If it's consistent with the local code and comprehensive plan, any impacts on adjacent Adequacy of public facilities, it will connect to St. Lucie County Utilities for water and wastewater, adequacy of fire protection, and if there's any impacts to the environmental, any environmental impacts. Made notices were sent out to thirty-nine property owners within five hundred feet of the subject site. The planning department did receive two responses not in favor of this conditional use petition. To the south, the owner of the storage facility that's to the south did oppose the development that was approved back a couple of years or so ago. They were looking at constructing a three-story storage facility. And also, the property owner to the north is a business owner that has a hair salon. They did oppose the development as well. Staff recommends that this petition be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval, subject to the following conditions outlined. Within ninety days of the development order of approval, the developers should, shall do a fee in lieu of for the sidewalks along Abeka Drive in the rear of the site, or to the east of the site, prior to the building permit. A ground sign shall require review from the planning department before the sign is issued to, by the building permit. Also, prior to the minor site plan approval, a finalized tree mitigation plan is consistent with the land development code. Prior to minor site plan approval, a finalized landscape plan consisting with the land development code, seven oh nine oh oh. Prior to the commencement of development, shall provide the required fee in lieu of a tree mitigation requirements as detailed within the approved tree mitigation plan. A vegetation move will permit exemption shall be issued by the Environmental Resource Department. A gopher tortoise survey shall be conducted by the state certified tortoise agent. Also, all category invasive species shall be eradicated from the site, and also, again, a site, a site development permit is required prior to performing site development improvements, and that will be through the Public Works Department. Staff is available to answer any questions. Also, the agents are here as well to answer any questions you may have on the proposed site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any question from the staff?
Where's the water going to go from all this pavement and stuff? That little tiny detention area in the front?
Chair Low, Commissioner Benner, Ty here is pulling up on screen. There's three dry detention areas proposed, north, south, and west. This would be subject to local and state stormwater permitting requirements. Should there not be adequate storage via those dry detention areas, exfiltration, underground storage could be a consideration. But the applicant's engineer, professional engineer is here this evening can weigh in on some of the preliminary design for stormwater treatment.
Is that part of the landscape buffer? Or they still have a landscape buffer plus the nineteen and a half to fifteen foot on the one side?
That, that is correct. And Ty here maybe utilizing the magnifying glass, for instance, along Turnpike Feta Road, at about fifteen feet in width, and then the required landscape buffer on the south side, outside.
Because like the building north, on the northwest corner is twenty-four feet in from the property line there, and you're showing nineteen and a half feet from the property line to the building, but yet that's also the retention area there, so, which is low lying. So, what is the buffer then if it's going to be water retention?
So, the landscape buffer can consist of a few things. The Public Works Department's usually not looking for hardy materials or trees where it impacts the storage capacity. However, some Florida native species such as bald cypress do well alongside dried detention areas. That, that has been an active conversation with the minor site plan review as to what material can be co-located and still meet the minimum criteria for that landscape buffer.
Was there any type of opaque fencing or anything since it's storage units or?
That is correct. On, on the south side affronting Abeka Drive, where the building itself is not functioning as that buffer, since it's a passive use of the building, there would be a connected opaque fence or wall required. One of the conditions or I believe clarification that's been made since the original staff report was published is verifying that that connecting wall would be a minimum of eight feet in height, again, have the landscape buffering on the south side of it.
Is the applicant here tonight?
Good evening. My name is Pedro, representing the owner. Address is one two two four zero, southwest one thirty-one Avenue, Miami, Florida. I don't have any comments. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll close that, and we'll open up a public hearing. Anybody from the public would like to speak or against the project? Seeing none, we'll close that and move it back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Board can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the staff conditions.
Mr. Dell made a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Call the second, Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Ms. Denise?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Lowens?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am.
nine D, LDC tax amendment. Irene?
Menlo, members of the commission, while Irene's walking up to join us. As noted, agenda item nine D is a proposed amendment set to chapters three and four of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code. Although there's an overlap in the applicant for agenda items nine D and E, again, they are independent petitions, two separate public hearings and matters before you this evening, one policy-based, one related to a rezoning and design for a property within the towns, villages, and countryside.
We need to vote on these separately.
Yes. Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Irene Suttlemeyer, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. This is a public hearing on the proposed amendment of chapter three and chapter four of the Land Development Code with regard to some provisions that are applicable in the towns, villages, and countryside overlay. So, the ad for this public hearing was published on December first, twenty twenty-three, so therefore, this public hearing was properly noticed. So, briefly, as you know, the towns, villages, and countryside vision and regulations have been the subject of some recent attention by the Board of County Commissioners. The board had a workshop in July and directed the organization of public workshops. Those public workshops were held in October and November, and a report will be provided to the Board of County Commissioners in the new year. Recent activity follows the history that is identified on the slide. TVC, LDCs were adopted back in two thousand and six. They took effect in two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven, there were some cleanup amendments of the TVC adopted. Two thousand and twenty, the TVC comp plan element and land development code were amended to reduce the period of affordability, of required affordability for workforce housing from twenty-five years to eight years. In April of twenty twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of amendments to the Land Development Code and the comp plan that will allow a hamlet land unit development form of development. The board will consider those, is scheduled to consider those amendments in February. And then, of course, we had the recent workshops. So, just for a little context, to remember, the comp plan goal for the TVC is to establish a development framework that encourages a sustainable settlement pattern that preserves the rural character of St. Lucie County, protects and enhances the natural environment, and increases the quality of life of the citizens. The first objective to implement that goal is to establish a development framework. Anyway, there was something else there. So, this application was filed on behalf of the owners of Bedner Farms Track, about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seventy-eight acres located northeast of the I ninety-five and Indrio Road interchange. As Corey mentioned, it's two separate applications. The proposed amendments to the Land Development Code were identified by the applicants in their effort to develop a regulating plan that they believe is attractive and marketable to the development community, and be consistent with the code. So, I want to make, take an opportunity to note the applicant's representatives. The staff report for the Land Development Code only identified Bradley Curry, Vice President of Engineering Design and Construction, but the applicant's team also includes Jennifer Morton, a professional landscape architect, president of her own firm headquartered in Palm Beach Gardens, and Kara Wood, familiar to many of you, principal with the District Planning Group. They've been a pleasure to work with. The request to amend the Land Development Code is a companion to the petition to amend zoning atlas. To apply the planned retail workplace zoning district to this property. If adopted, the amendments will apply to all planned retail workplace zoning districts in the towns, villages, and countryside overlay. The proposed amendments are not limited to the particular property. So, the proposed amendments to the Land Development Code are really fairly modest. Section three point oh one, point oh three, point G G is the zoning district for the planned retail workplace, and the proposed amendments are for the street network and lot types in that zoning district. Section four point oh four, point oh four is the towns, villages, and countryside overlay zone, and amendments are proposed to revise the residential design standards in the towns, villages, and countryside overlay. The staff report discussed proposed amendments to three point oh one, point oh three, point E E, which is the planned towns and villages zoning district, which covers the details of the flowway, but the applicant has withdrawn its petition to amend the text regarding the flowway. So, we won't be discussing that text amendment this evening. So, with regard to the proposed amendments regarding the street network design, this is an issue that came up in earlier application. The applicants have proposed the addition of this text in the future street network. So, all streets in the future street network plan must be publicly dedicated. Private streets and closed or gated streets are prohibited, notwithstanding the provisions of elections, blah blah. So, that addresses the issue. You know, generally, the county doesn't want to take ownership of a lot of new streets, especially residential streets. We don't want to be responsible for the ongoing maintenance and repair, rebuilding of those streets in the future. If it's on the future network plan, it will be publicly dedicated, but all the streets in the, in the TVC are intended to be open to the public. Another modest, modest change with regard to the provision of alleys. So, again, this is applicable only to the planned retail workplace zoning district, and the applicant has proposed that alleys be mandatory only in the core transect zone, and in the center transect zone, as well as all the other transect zones, alleys remain encouraged, but they will only be required in the planned retail workplace in the core transect. The staff supports all the proposed changes thus far. With regard to the standards for new residential buildings, this is in section four point oh four, point oh four F. The current text, the existing text, says that the following standards apply to new dwellings on pre-existing lots in the TVC overlay zone. All dwellings built in new subdivisions, zoned, planned town-village, planned country subdivision, and planned retail- and planned retail workplace, and all dwellings in new subdivisions approved pursuant to those sections of code, which are the sections that, how you develop a subdivision after you've transferred some of your development credits to other property. So staff will be recommending that applicant did not recommend. Staff will be recommending a little bit of refinement on the applicability of this, of the residential building standards. So this, I just want to briefly point out some of the difficulties with the existing text with regard to the residential design standards. First of all, it only applies, it says residential design standards. It only deals with driveways and garages. So detached garages must preferably be located in the rear. So none of us know what must preferably means. And then, you know, detached garages must be accessed from the alley or lane, except where no alley or lane is present. You know, a maximum of 25% of residential units in each phase may include front-loaded detached garages. Well, detached garages in the rear of the lot, front-loaded off a narrow driveway is one of the preferred traditional neighborhood design standards. So I've always thought that this word was actually intended to be attached. But it limits to 25%, one of the highly preferable forms of residential development. So there's agreement that this section of code needs some work. So both, I, staff and the applicant are recommending that those first two paragraphs be struck in their entirety. So here's the applicant's proposed amendment. The TVC settlement principles provide that public streets be designed to balance the needs of all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. To achieve this balance is preferred for garages and driveways to be located in the rear of the lot to minimize an auto-dominated streetscape. Front-loaded garages shall not compromise the walkability and intended pedestrian character of a neighborhood. So that's kind of an intense statement, and staff is recommending some modifications of that text. And that's presented here. So first, adding the word intent, we make clear the intent of this paragraph. So TV, TVC settlement principles include publicly available streets designed to meet the needs of all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. In residential neighborhoods, an important walkability consideration is whether driveways, cars, and on-street parking dominate the streetscape, or continuous wide sidewalks and healthy street trees are provided. The intent of this subsection is to seek to ensure that garages and driveways do not compromise the walkability and intended pedestrian character of a neighborhood. They're just birdsmithing, really. The applicant's proposed amendments provide that, you know, the standards apply as they currently apply, and then provides that the Planning and Development Services Director can approve modifications to these standards as requested by the applicant that do not overly compromise the walkability of the neighborhood. So we're proposing new standards that the Planning and Development Services Director can approve. These are the modifications. These are the standards that we're suggesting be applied. So applicability, staff is suggesting that this driveway and garage standards will not apply to pre-existing lots in the TVC overlay zone. These could be five-acre lots, three-acre lots, 10-acre lots, that the dwellings are situated far off of the road, and maybe they, they don't need to comply with the new urbanist, or traditional neighborhood design standards in the TVC. So instead, providing that the standards will apply to new dwellings built in new subdivisions, zoned, planned town-village, planned countryside subdivision, or planned retail workplace, and to new dwellings in new subdivisions approved pursuant to Point 4.04.04-D and 4.04.04-E. And those, again, are the provisions for subdivisions after some of the development density has been transferred off of the property. The residential development on existing parcels and residential development in new subdivisions created pursuant to Subsection 4.04.04-D3, meaning after transfer of development rights, are exempt from these garage and driveway standards. Any questions thus far? Thank you. So again, the applicants have proposed some, some alternative design criteria that could be offered and that could be considered to allow some deviation from the standards. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. These are the standards, I beg your pardon. These are the proposed standards with showing staff's modifications. The text in blue is the applicant's proposed text, and staff modifications are shown in red. So front-loaded garages shall not comprise more than 50% of the width of the front elevation of the house. So rather than measuring the garage doors, we're going to, staff is suggesting we measure the garage width. Rather than the principal plane, we measure the width of the front elevation of the house. And front-loaded garages shall be limited to 50% of the width of the front elevation. Notwithstanding the previous provision, up to 20% of dwellings within a neighborhood can include garages which measure up to 60% of the width of the front elevation of the house. This next thing about two-car garages is brought up there. Differing house types and lot widths must be dispersed throughout the neighborhood to provide variety to the streetscape. Staff is recommending the unlot width. Driveway width shall be, should be limited. In the LDC, the word should means shall, and perhaps we should just use shall so that there's no ambiguity. But driveway width should be limited at the property line to protect the priority of the sidewalk and to provide on-street parking. The applicant had suggested driveway width should be limited at the street curve to encourage on-street parking. Measuring at the street curve is where the driveway is already crossed over the sidewalk, and so the, the driveway crossing the sidewalk and the width of that is what staff believes needs attention, not just at the curb. In no case shall the driveway width exceed 50% of the lot width or 20 feet, whichever is narrower, where the driveway meets the property line. Single-family residential driveway widths shall not exceed 22 feet. So if someone wants to widen their driveway as it approaches the garage or provide on their own lot more generous room for opening and closing doors, they can. But where it crosses their front property line, it would be limited to 20 feet. Front-loaded garages on residential lots greater than 45 feet in width shall be recessed from the main facade no less than 16 feet. Here's something where staff tried to be a little more generous, and 10 feet. One of the issues with recessing the garage, even though it helps with the streetscape, most of the house designs, when the garage is recessed, have kind of a long foyer or long hallway. And the feedback that we've been receiving from residential developers is that their buyers don't want that long hallway. The garage recess may be measured from a front porch so long as the porch is at least six feet deep and width is at least 30% of the front elevation, trying to build in additional flexibility. And front porches meeting this standard may encroach into the front setback. Now, other provisions in the code specifically provide that front porches can, can encroach into the front setback by 10 feet. So we may need to add a little more specificity there. But we're providing, if you provide a nice generous front porch, six feet deep, and at least 30% of the front elevation, you can get relief on recessing your garage and the front setback. Front-loaded garages on residential lots less than 45 feet in width must meet this standard, same standard, unless modifications are granted. Adding this, which might be self-evident, but we want to spell it out, the width of a side-loaded garage shall not be limited relative to the width of the lot or the dwelling if the wall of the garage facing a street includes at least two windows and other features to resemble living space. The side-loaded garages may also have reduced setbacks from the front property line. Currently, a side-loaded garage in our code is allowed to have only a 10-foot-wide driveway. So, doesn't seem to work. It can widen when it hits the garage, but it has to be 10 feet in the beginning. No limitations apply to garage width or driveway width as a percentage of the dwelling width of the lot when, dwelling width or the lot when the driveway is accessed from a rear alley. The garage can be as wide as the dwelling if you're accessed off of a rear alley. Here, we get with the deviations. So deviations from these standards may be approved by the Board of County Commissioners upon demonstration that other proposed design features adequately mitigate the impacts of larger garages and driveways on the streetscape. Such alternative design options may include, but are not limited to. So you'll recall, the applicant suggested that the Director of the Planning and Development Services Department should be able to approve these, and I believe the applicants will speak to that. Can understand some of their thoughts. My thought was, the Director of the Department will be inundated with these requests. And, and we want people to be serious when they're presenting things to the Board and try to limit changes after that. So the kind of alternative design options that, that can be considered in granting relief from those other standards, such as limitation to 50% of the dwelling width, is one. Commitment to provide a minimum percentage of dwellings within the neighborhood that have a one-car garage and/or a driveway that does not exceed 12 feet in width. Some real wide driveways and garages are okay. It's not every single house. Provision of structured soils for a modular suspended pavement system, which is designed to meet the needs for water, soil, and oxygen for the roots of mature trees, while still supporting the weight of heavy vehicles. One of the concerns about wide driveways is it leaves no room for the street trees to thrive. Additional shade trees on individual residential lots beyond what is required by code. Wider sidewalks than what is required by code. Providing a boulevard street section with shade trees and pedestrian pathways in the center median, that is at least 30 feet wide. The street section for boulevard already provides for the median to be 30 feet wide, but we just wanted to, I wanted to point that worth emphasizing in this section. A second floor over the garage.
I'm sorry. I'm getting a little in the weeds here. So all of these items that you're going over now
are options.
These are options. And, and these options are proposed to mitigate wider driveways and front-loaded garages?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so these are some of the carrots that a developer can offer the county and the, the people of Liquid Park and St. Lucie County that have pressed the TVC into its current condition. So these are the, the offerings as an alternative.
So yes, that there, if you, you can just, if you can provide driveways that don't exceed 50% of the dwelling width, and if you, and you are allowed to have 20% of your residential units with driveways that don't exceed 60% of the dwelling width. But if you don't meet those standards, then you can, if you want to design your community differently, you can propose other driveway and garage standards. And if.
Only from this list of parts?
Well, it says, including but not limited to. So deviations from the standards may be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So it'll come to the Board, it'll come to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the Board of County Commissioners. It would be proposed as part of the preliminary development plan. That's, this is the point that the applicants will be speaking to, that these, this level of detail of site planning and driveway width often doesn't come up until final site plan, as opposed to preliminary site plan, and that that's why we may need to have the Board of County, the Director be authorized to approve them. So that, but right now, staff's position is that if you want deviation from the adopted standards, then you should be asking the Board of County Commissioners for them. Because in the TVC, final site plans do not come back to you or to the Board of County Commissioners. So did I, are we on track?
Thank you. I, it was a, there are a lot of items here and needed to understand.
Yes, and I'm sorry for my awkwardness in getting started. So we were, if you provide a boulevard street section with sage trees and pedestrian pathways in the center, that is at least 30 feet wide. So then the people can walk down the median and not be walking down the sidewalk that's constantly interrupted by the driveways. The applicant had suggested providing on-street parking would be a mitigation method. Staff doesn't agree with that. We're suggesting that that doesn't work. A second floor over the garage with living space and windows overlooking the street, including accessory dwelling units. So I wanted, I, we added the living space to, to not have false fronts, not encourage people to have false fronts above the garage, but to actually have living space. Of course, in the TVC, accessory dwelling units are permitted, and accessory dwelling units don't count towards your density. Brick pavers or other improved hardscape materials on the driveway. Providing two separate garage doors for two-car garages rather than one larger door. Providing some lots where the garage is located in the rear of the lot and accessed by a narrow driveway. Providing some lots where the garage parking is accessed from a rear alley. So that is, this is the proposal. Staff is recommending approval of the requested amendments to the Land Development Code as they have been modified by staff for Section 3.01.03.GG and 4.04.04.F. And that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. And I know the applicant will want to address you as well.
Are there any questions from the Board?
Can we go back one more, one more slide for the staff modifications? Can we go back one more, one more slide for the staff modifications? What is the reason behind providing two separate garage doors rather than one?
It's the, it's the appearance. It has a, breaking up the bulk or the mass of the big garage door just has a more traditional neighborhood development feel.
Is that a may or a shall?
Well, these are options. No, these are options, and I don't think necessarily any single one would be enough. We're just trying to create some flexibility and some variety in the design. One of the bits of feedback that we've heard at the workshops, it's maybe premature to talk about, but we've heard a lot of dislike of mandatory rear alleys. We are getting more and more proposed narrow lots outside the TVC as well as inside the TVC, and this is where the driveway, the width of the driveway and the width of the garage can dominate the residential streetscape on narrow lots. So we're trying to, trying to protect the appeal and inviting streetscape, the ability to provide healthy street trees while also-
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair Low.
Which first?
Yes, Ms. Smith.
We have had two, just within the month of November, two TVC workshops, and I think it's premature for us to be rewriting the LDC now, before we even hear the results of those workshops, particularly in light of the last one, which was held on Wednesday, I think the twenty-ninth of November, which was primarily attended by the development world. There were very few St. Lucie County citizens present for that meeting. But toward the end of that meeting, Brian Nolan from Lucido Associates offered to host a meeting where the development community would get together, put their heads together, and offer up some ideas, and I think this is a first pass that ought to be discussed at such a meeting. But I think it's really premature for us to be approving or recommending approval of any modifications at this point, and I don't want us to waste any more time than we already have going over all of this. I'm glad everybody's hearing it so that we can have some context, but I really think that this is not something that we should vote on this evening. I think that this should be held off until after the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council's report comes in in January and is presented to the Board of County Commissioners at their request, and until we've had some offered ideas and some consensus, not only amongst the development and planning world, but also amongst the citizens of St. Lucie County. And so there's full sunshine on this whole process, which was the whole point of having the public meetings in November and to revisit the TVC. I don't think it's a good idea to move this forward tonight in light of all the things that's going on, the money that the county is spending to have Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council come in here and hold these meetings, put together this report, and also the effort by, on a voluntary basis by our local planning community.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments?
You left out the carport.
Mr. Chairman?
I got, so in other words, with these alternatives, I can exceed, as a developer, they could exceed how many front-loaded garages there are and defeat the whole purpose of having garages in the back and alleyways? Is that what I'm understanding?
As the code, as it's proposed to be written, is the garage width and the driveway width would be limited as a percentage of the width of the dwelling, and on lots that are more than forty-five feet wide, the garage must be recessed ten feet. And if you're not meeting that, if you want to implement other design options, or maybe mix up your design options in your neighborhood, you could choose among these to say why you should be able to have more than, for example, maybe you want more than twenty percent of your lots to be able to have driveways that exceed, or that, you want to have more than twenty percent of your driveways that are sixty percent of your residential, your dwelling width. You want to have more than twenty percent of them. So if you want to propose that, then you need to offer some additional, other mitigation by choosing from this list, or proposing something else.
In other words, if I want to not even go by the intent of the TVC, just build a subdivision like we just approved at our last meeting with forty and fifty-foot wide lots, all I gotta do is some of these alternatives, and I can just do a normal project like we've been seeing with forty and fifty-foot wide lots, with normal front-loaded garages and driveways and garage scapes like crazy. That's what it sounds, it's what it sounds like, because the whole point of the TVC sounded, it was to have the rear, the garages in the rear of the property or have alleyways, but now we're saying, that may have been our intent, but if you kind of want to just throw that all out the window and exceed all those minimum requirements we put in the TVC, all you gotta do is some of these alternatives, and you can just do it like anywhere else in the county.
Well, by doing all, not to be, yes, we are providing much more flexibility than exists in the code now. That's the recommendation. I hear and respect what you're saying. I would say that I don't think that these other applications that have come forward where this has been a big issue have been providing these different alternative design, alternative designs like we're recommending. I don't believe we're seeing anybody say, well, you know, thirty percent of our lots will just have a twelve-foot driveway.
And if I may, Commissioner Binner, the text as presented on screen offered by staff, is that determination would require demonstration that these other proposed design features adequately mitigate the impacts of these larger garages and driveway designs on the streetscape? It could be a menu of options. It's certainly something that the Board and Reviewing Body, like the Planning and Zoning Commission, could recommend against modifications, you know, if the text as presented on screen were to be adopted. Again, context sensitive design is key, whether it's a compact urban area that is intended for a mix of uses along a busy street network, or a more rural-designed neighborhood, for instance, due east of Meadowwood or Pantherwood. So I think there's a wide variety of variables, but what we've heard is a charge for increased flexibility, and what staff's presented in relation or response to the petition before you is expanding that menu of options, but trying to find design changes that would mitigate and still preserve and enhance streetscape for new communities.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to Commissioner Slack? I just want, I want to acknowledge, we've had a discussion of the Board's action in July, Board of County Commissioners' action in July when they scheduled the workshops, and we received specific direction to continue to move forward on any applications that came forward. So that's why, we're not unaware of the risk of piecemealing things and all that.
Any questions from the Board? Is the applicant here? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Brad Curry with Engineering Design and Construction. We had one presentation that included both applicant, both applications, so I don't know if it would be better. I think staff did an excellent job presenting the text amendments. I think the only topic of discussion for the text amendments would be who reviews the alternatives that are being proposed. Staff did mention that in the TVC area, when you submit a final site plan, one of the carrots that's there is that you do not have to come back to the Board of County Commissioners for your final site plan approval. So the process that staff laid out before you tonight would be, if we wanted to do any of those, pick from those charts of options, that would require us to go back to the Board for choosing those options, but our final site plan wouldn't go to the Board. So it actually creates a whole nother step that we think doesn't make a lot of sense. It would be better for, once you go through this PRW, the rezoning process, it stays strictly with staff, and it just makes things easier from a processing standpoint. Again, when we submit, if we are successfully getting approval of this rezone, the next step would be a final site plan, and that's a hundred percent staff. That does not require to go back to the Board. If we choose any of these options, that would go back to the Board. So I think that's the only option. I also think that showing the whole entire presentation, I think there were some discussions about if we pick from this list, then it's just like any other development. I think our proposal will show you that that's not the case, that the TVC does require a different type of layout, different requirements for connectivity, all of those things. I think if we presented our project, I think that would help you understand that picking from the list just adds more flexibility. I think our overall theme, you're gonna hear me say it a couple times tonight if we move forward the presentation, is that TVC's been around for a long time, and there hasn't been a project built for the, by the TVC standards. So what we're trying to do is build a project that stays within the intent, the vision of the TVC, but also takes into account the marketability of today's housing from a cost standpoint, and also from what we're seeing that the buyer wants. So we're trying to merge those two things, and you're gonna hear that from us over and over again tonight. So we're happy to go through the text amendment and talk about the text amendment some more, but my recommendation would be that we almost hit a pause on the text amendment application, move forward to the rezone, and then come back to the text amendment and approve, and hear both of those at the same time.
Mr. Curry, if, actually, there's a lot of things that were brought up on this tonight, a lot of changes made. Can you bring up just the things that you disagree with?
The only thing that we disagree with, Mr. Chairman, is that the, picking the options, if you're choosing to go through those different options to exceed some of the percentages for front-loaded garages or width of garages, we want that ability, that flexibility to be approved by the Planning Director and not have to go back to the Board. Right now, if we have those options, it requires, the way the staff has written, the text amendment at this point requires us to go back to the Board. The only thing that we would say is that those changes are approved along with the final site plan, that have to be approved by the Planning Director anyways. So in this case, the Planning Director's gonna get a final site plan, he'll review that, or she will review that, and they will sign off on the final site plan at the same time they sign off on the alternatives. So it's not really, they're gonna have to review the site plan anyways, it's just a different component. So instead of alternatives going back to the Board, they'll be signed off by the Planning Director.
That process could speed up your approval process.
Yes, sir. And that's the, that's what we thought the intent of the TVC was, is to go through this process, get, go through the zoning process, the PRW, whichever zoning district you're seeking, and then you would go straight to staff approval for the final site plan.
And the county feels about this issue?
Mr. Chairman Low, members of the Commission, and I'll encourage Irene to add on. I think the response would be that we would seek some type of indication and directive from the Board during the rezoning process that this particular project, based upon context and design, would or should be eligible for alternatives, whether the specifics are laid out, but essentially the Board giving the nod to delegate authority to the Director to implement these alternatives, but that be a test or component of the Board's rezoning, whereas it's not just, you know, we presented a rezoning and a design to the Board, the Board green lights it, and then relief is asked for later, that there be a notification or indication that relief would be sought, maybe some balance and overview of it, and then some of the specificity can be delegated to the Director based upon particular blocks, layouts, percentages, but we would, we would want the Board to have a key role in basically identifying a project that would be eligible.
Mr. Curry, could you live with that?
I think that's definitely something we can discuss, yes, sir.
That's solid.
Yes.
Your next issue?
That's it, for the text amendment.
That's the only thing?
Yes, sir.
Well, everything else?
Yes, sir, we're good with everything else.
Any other questions from the staff, from the Board?
Okay, Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't you know when you're going in preliminarily, on a prelim site plan, whether or not you're gonna be seeking those alternatives or not?
Right now, the plan that we get approved as required by the TVC is called a regulating plan, and you'll see what that looks like tonight. We do, we probably would know that, but the specificity of what a regulating plan has is nowhere near the amount that a final site plan would have. So I think we can make some assumptions of what that's going to be, but until we get that further down, I've always, it seems like I feel like a broken record. You start out with a conceptual site plan, conceptual plan, you move to a final site plan, you move to construction plans. As you get further down the line, obtain more detail, we're at the very first step here, which is just the rezoning, the plan development or PRW process, and so it's difficult for us to know all of that at this time. That's, again, the reason that we would like to have it pushed to the final site plan, as part of the final site plan. It's difficult for us to know that stuff now.
Like a, I mean, a boulevard with a thirty-foot median in the middle that we're supposed to put pedestrians walking down between lanes of traffic, that sounds like something you would know on a prelim site plan, that's a really big road network, or whether I'm gonna have accessory dwelling units in the back on top of a garage, or if I'm even gonna have alleyways. In other words, I'm trying to look in the future, like, are we gonna see a prelim site plan with alleyways and rear-loaded garages, and then final site plan comes and, hey, we're eighty-six in all the alleyways, and we're gonna have all front-facing garages, and we threw a big boulevard through the middle of the community with forty-foot wide lots?
The regulating plan that will be approved by this, by this Commission, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, will demonstrate where the streets are gonna go, what the streets are gonna look like, the street types. So from that standpoint, we're gonna be locked in. So if we show an alley on the regulating plan, the only way to get rid of that alley would, in my opinion, would be to change the regulating plan. So the regulating plan does tie us to some things. You're, there, I can't, I can't say what options we're going to have. We put a menu of options there, but like the thirty-foot alley, I think is a good, I mean, the thirty-foot boulevard is a good example of, if we were planning on doing that, we would have to show that at this time on the regulating plan.
And staff, that's right, so it wouldn't be that big of a change then from a prelim to a final? With these alternatives, then we would see it upfront anyways?
It's difficult to say, I think. I think that's what-
Well, Chair, you said, you just said that you would be locked into a thirty-way Broadway road plan on a prelim that the Board of County Commissioners and all of us would see.
The regulating plan is gonna be adopted.
So if that's true, then we would be voting on it already, and this is kind of a duplicate request here. So what is it? Can things drastically change with these alternatives, based on what we're all, what type of communities we're approving and the Board of County Commissioners are approving?
Chair Low, Commissioner Binner, what I would submit is that street types, layouts of those streets, and other components are declared at the time of the regulating plan. We would know whether streets will have front-loaded driveways, front-loaded garages through that regulating plan in almost every instance. I think that the question is when we see final home designs on a particular lot size, forty feet, forty-five, fifty, sixty, you name it, that if there is a developer that is looking for, for instance, a wider driveway than the width of the house, that's when they would be proposing these alternatives. A developer through the PRW process could identify select streets in which they would be looking for authorization for that alternative set, but there could be an instance in which that request is made after the rezoning, but usually not overhauling rear-loaded designs, streets, lot types, things like that. And I believe Ms. Wood would like to add to that.
Mr. Chair, with the pleasure of the Board to answer Mr. Binner's comments, and for the record, I'm Kara Wood with District Planning Group. Many of you know me, I started working for the county in two thousand and seven, specifically to implement the Towns, Villages, and Countryside Plan upon its adoption. So, but to answer your question, Mr. Binner, there are very clear expectations in the TVC code about the kinds of things that must be identified in the preliminary development plan on the regulating plan. Street types is one of those things. So that really locks in the plan, and then when a plan goes to final site plan, it's not unlike a preliminary PUD approval to a final PUD approval. There can be some slight adjustments and deviations, but it must be in substantial conformity to the preliminary plan. So I think the boulevard section is a good thing to point out, yes, that would have to be something, that if we were doing this kind of trading of, we want some bigger garages, we're gonna provide this grand boulevard section, that would have to be identified at the preliminary level. Other detailed things like, you know, stamped brick pavers, or increased street trees, or a slightly wider sidewalk, there are some details that Irene very wisely worked into this kind of bargaining chip scenario of being able to ensure that there is flexibility, but also that you don't end up with communities in St. Lucie County that have just garages all along the streetscape. We are very sensitive to that as a concern, we don't want to create that, and yet at the same time, we don't want to, we don't want to be like Andrea nine-eight-five, which was approved three years ago and has not been able to sell anything. three years ago and has not been able to sell anything. I was still a consultant for St. Lucie County when that was approved, and I talked to most of the builders that the developer was trying to sell to at the time. None of them wanted to buy for various reasons, and this is one of them. So we're just trying to provide some flexibility to keep the, the general intent of TVC for a streetscape that is very walkable, but also be flexible to market demand. So those are the kinds of details, I hope that, that helps explain the kinds of details that we would hope to be able to work out. A final site plan, we probably wouldn't be able to identify on a preliminary development plan, which driveways would have brick pavers, you know, to mitigate a slightly larger garage, if that helps.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause like if we're gonna let, if you just have the Planning and Services Director do it, if it's not substantially changing the character of the preliminary site plan that was voted on, and it's just minor stuff, that's one thing, but if it's like putting in a huge Broadway section of road and getting rid of like major site changes, like, yeah, I can see coming back to the board, but I was just trying to figure out why we're coming back to the Board of County Commissioners if it's only gonna be minor stuff that is changed after the fact.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think as, as Corey explained, our, our, in providing for the Board of County Commissioners to review and express an opinion or make directions with regard to the use of these alternative methods, it's not to have to come back for a second public hearing necessarily, but for the applicant, the developer, to anticipate the needs and the desires, and make that clear to the board upfront, that whether they're gonna be requesting relief from that, those standards. Not to go back, though...
But isn't what they just said, though, if they, so in other words, if I had this property and I'm doing, and it seems like all of them are done in blocks, if I have blocks A, B, and C, I sell blocks A and B, the developer for block C wants to make changes, then that could be three years down the road when developer C comes into the picture and wants to make changes, which then is doing that, it's not gonna be done up front. They wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't be able to give you that intent today, and they may not sell block C for three or five years down the road, which then means they're coming back anyways, so I, which kinda contradicts what you just said there, so that's what I'm just trying to clarify.
If I may, Chair, Mr. Chair, some of this may start to be better illustrated when we review our proposed site plan. I don't believe that this board has actually seen a, a sort of TDC-compliant site plan where we're showing lot types and street types in quite some time, because I think the, the preliminary planned town-village for Mr. Lurmer's property at the southeast corner of Andreo 95 was the last TDC project that had to follow those specific design regulations. So, so it might be better illustrated when we start to talk about the site plan. In the TDC land development regulations, there are adopted street types and lot types. So it's, it's like a little menu. If you wanna do your development and you just choose from the streets and lots that are in the development, that are in the code, and place them in your site plan, those are essentially approved by right. If you want to do something else, you can propose an alternative street type or an alternative lot type. Those have to be approved with your preliminary plan at the public hearing process. So you'll see tonight that we will have many, most of our streets are taken directly from the code, a number of our lots are taken directly from the code, but we will also be proposing alternative street types and lot types to be able to address some of these issues that we're, that we're talking about, be able to address marketability. It's, it's in those alternative lot types that we are able to identify some of these things, and that's why this is coming up now, in starting to look for builders who will, who will build a product that is TDC-compliant on some of our lots. We've identified that the driveway and garage issue is at play in some of those lots. So, so those are some of the reviews that you'll be able to see, and, and some of those bigger picture issues, I think, will be identified at the preliminary level. But again, you know, brick pavers, we won't know that, we won't know where to put those. So I'll just, I'll just offer that as a suggestion, that perhaps if we, and I understand that procedurally we need to vote on these things separately, but it may be helpful for us to launch into the site plan and rezoning presentations, just so you can get some pictures of what this looks like.
So what do you really feel the difference is between your two thoughts?
I don't know that we have a difference. I think it's, I think we're all trying to sort of work out what this would actually look like, to be able to provide flexibility and certainty through the public hearing process. So I think there's, there's probably some slight tweaking of the language that we would need to work with staff on between, between this hearing and the Board of County Commissioners, but I think we're all on the same page in terms of, in terms of generally identifying some bigger picture issues in the preliminary planned stages that would need some flexibility, but being able to work out some of those finer details of where we can put additional street trees, or which lots would have a two-car garage versus a one-car garage, that we would be able to work that out at the time of final site plan. I think we're, I think we're on the same page about that.
I say we hear the presentation for the next one, to get an image.
So this, Chair, we could, in your, in your, in motion, we may, we could bring this up to make that part of your motion to get this agreement done.
Do we have the motion, or can we just hear the presentation?
No, no, no motion made now.
Chair Lo, I, I think it would be good to follow their suggestion and see what it is they'd like to do as an example of how it might be implemented, even though I still maintain that it's putting the cart before the horse, you know, changing the LDC while we're in the middle of this conversation and public hearing process.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from staff, from the board? Seeing none from the applicant, now we'll open the meeting to the public. Anybody would like to come forward to speak pro or against the project? Seeing none, we'll close that, go back to the board for a discussion and a motion.
Can we move forward with hearing the presentation on the, the actual project as, as, as one, and then we'll go back and vote on both separately? I think that's what Ms. Wood was trying to explain.
Chair, to, to add on to that, if I may, I, I understand what the, the request is, is to temporarily, during this meeting, table Agenda Item 9D, shift to 9E, either take staff's presentation than the applicant's, or move directly to the applicant's presentation of their proposed rezoning and preliminary plan, and then if, if the board would like to table that, to go back to an action on the Land Development Code text amendment, I think this body has discretion.
We combine item presentations all the time, I don't think we need to get any fancy things, let's just hear the damn presentation.
Well, if we don't approve this, there's no sense in going on to the next one.
But we can't make a determination on it without more data, this is, this is blind.
We've done joint presentations on items in the past, many times.
So Chair, I, I think we'd be looking at direction, if you would like staff to provide our presentation on Agenda Item 9E, or if you would like to hear directly from the, the applicant first, on Agenda Item 9E in correlation to the proposal for 9D.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I suggest staff presentation first.
Yeah.
Second.
We don't need a motion for that, we just do it.
Need a motion to do this, don't we?
No.
Mike won't give an answer to this question.
Move the changes, we're changing the, to move forward, change, put... To move up E instead of D right now, I mean, put D instead of E right now.
Yes.
That's what everybody wants you to do. So is the motion to hold?
I, I don't think we need a motion.
Chair, I don't believe you need a motion to do that. I don't believe you need a motion.
Is it legal?
Yes, I think, I think you can table 9D and move on to 9E. Just be sure to come back and vote on it, obviously.
Right.
Okay, we can table 9, 9E, okay.
Chair Lo, members of the commission, while Irene Suttermeyer, Senior Planner, is providing the presentation onset, introduce Brian Arbiter, our Senior Environmental Regulations Planner.
Good evening, Brian Arbiter, for the record, Environmental Resources.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, again, Irene Suttermeyer, Senior Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. This is Agenda Item 9E, and it is the request to rezone from Ag 1, Agricultural 1 zoning districts, to the Bedner Farms Planned Retail Workplace Zoning District and the preliminary regulating plan. This public hearing has been properly noticed with a mailed notice to property owners within 500 feet, signs erected on the property, and publication in the newspaper on November So this, as we've discussed, it's 177 acres, 178 acres at the northeast, northeast of the intersection of 95 and Andreo Road. Given the proximity to the interchange of I-95 and Andreo Road, a mix of commercial and residential uses has been anticipated since before the TVC took effect. Prior to the TVC, this property had a mixed future land use designation, and the proposed mix of uses and the proposed density and intensity being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan, with the TVC element, and the Land Development Code. Pursuant to the Land Development Code, the Planned Retail Workplace Zoning District is a specialized zoning district to accommodate retail or workplace land uses outside a town or a village, in a manner consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the TVC element. As I said, this, this property was in, previously in a mixed-use, future land use designation, and in the Andreo Road mixed-use activity area, the low-intensity area in pink allowed up to five dwelling, residential dwelling units an acre, the medium allowed up to nine dwelling units an acre. Additionally, within the Andreo Road mixed-use activity area, industrial uses, commercial uses, institutional uses were all permitted. When the comprehensive plan element, TVC element was adopted, the, the permissible densities that were in place previously were brought forward and are illustrated on this transferable development value map. Again, here's the subject property, so the dark red area can be developed at up to, or is eligible for up to five dwelling units an acre in transferable development credits, and the brown area was eligible for nine dwelling units per acre in transferable development value credits. The Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan further identified the subject property northeast of 95 and, and Andreo Road as being appropriate for retail and workplace. So the general retail plan is on my left, and, and the workplace plan is on the right. The LDC workplace plan and general retail plan varies a little bit from what the LDC provides, but they're generally consistent. Again, this property is located within the urban services boundary, and therefore that illustrates intent, intention that it could be developed at more than one dwelling unit per acre. So now, finally getting to what is proposed. So this is the Bedner Farms' proposed preliminary planned retail workplace regulating plan with some, you know, staff added the color coding to help introduce the concepts. So in the south, along Andreo Road, here's Cobal Guard, is proposed the commercial neighborhood, and it will provide up to 420,000 square feet of a commercial center. The transect zones shown on the regulating plan for this commercial area are the core and the center. The core is intended to be the most urban, the most intense of the transect zones. Buildings are expected to be physically connected to create a continuous facade along the street, making walking inviting and pleasurable, very walkable. The center transect zone is also expected to contain a mix of uses with some attached and some detached buildings. Ideally, the buildings would be designed and constructed in such a way to accommodate changing uses over time. So to the east, east of Cobal Guard, is the residential area. The general transect zone is proposed, and this area is under 70 acres, something about 67 acres, and up to 780 dwelling units are proposed. They will be a mixture of townhomes, apartments, and detached single-family. On the, the northern neighborhood, also proposed general transect zone. The, the lot types and the unit types are detached, single-family units, about 310 units are proposed. This, the density of this neighborhood will be just under five units an acre. The density in this neighborhood is about 12 units an acre. There's no residential proposed in the commercial area. The overall density for the entire project over the 178, plus or minus acres, is about six dwelling units an acre. So this neighborhood and this neighborhood are proposed to be the general transect zone. The general transect zone is anticipated to be the, the largest neighborhood in a planned town or village, and it's expected to be primarily residential in character. But as was discussed in the staff report, the Land Development Code does not anticipate the general transect zone being provided in the Planned Retail Workplace Zoning District. In the Planned Retail Workplace Zoning District, the, the transect zones that are permitted are the core, the center, the fringe, and a specialized zoning district. So there's no general transect zone, and that is generally because in the Planned Retail Workplace, as the code is currently written, it anticipates that the residential uses will be provided in apartment buildings, in live-work units, and in mixed-use buildings. But given the ability to develop detached, single-family dwellings on the land prior to the adoption of the TVC, and the general compatibility of the proposed plan with the vision and goals for the TVC, such as providing residential uses within close and convenient walking distance to commercial goods and services, staff has recommended flexibility in the implementation of the TVC code to allow the general transect zone in the planned, in the, at Bedner Farms' Planned Retail Workplace Regulating Plan. So in addition, so in all rezoning applications, one of the key issues is the compatibility of the proposed uses and the proposed zoning district with the existing land uses and the existing zoning in the surrounding area. So the Planned Retail Workplace Zoning District would obviously provide for much more intensity and density than is existing in the surrounding agricultural lands. But as I explained with some detail early in the presentation, this change in density and intensity for this particular parcel has been anticipated since before the TVC was adopted. So the ways that we provide for compatibility is to provide, you know, the commercial area in the southwest corner, residential on the outs, outside, adjacent to the residential lands. Additionally, there is... Additionally, there is a landscape buffer proposed around the entirety of the property. And that's what I have to say about that. One of the other big questions that arises in all rezoning applications is the ability, these two questions, for every request to amend the zoning atlas, two questions. Will the rezoning result in additional demands on public facilities and services? And will those demands exceed the capacity of the public facilities and services? So clearly, the kind of intensity and density is going to require public facilities and services, and is going to have an impact on them. Just as one example, the, the traffic impacts snapshot provides that at build-out, as proposed, there'll be about 21,837 net new trips generated by this development. There will be some, some reduction in the trips based on the proximity of the residential to the shopping area. So some of these either pass-by trips, people, oh, excuse me, these are the pass-by trips, people who are already on the road, who will be stopping. Surprisingly, the anticipated internal capture, that is, people staying within the development, not going outside onto the road, is relatively modest effect. But some of the other impacts, you know, there, there will be schoolchildren generated. In the staff report, I provided some detail. There will be substantial consumption, demand and consumption of potable water. There will be substantial production of wastewater that needs to be treated. The, the, the Land Development Code provides for those items to be analyzed in great detail at the time of site plan approval to ensure that the level of service in these various public facilities and services can be met, and the developments will be required to ensure that the level of service is, continues to be met after their impacts are felt, and that will be addressed in more detail at the final site plan. So back to the Bedner Farms flowway, or to the regulating plan with some color illustration that shows the flowway. If you had a chance to look at the staff report, you'll see that that was the one item that staff believes that perhaps the proposed regulating plan could be modified to more closely adhere to the comp plan vision and the Land Development Code. The, the applicants have made quite a few revisions to the proposed flowway in response to staff's concerns. For example, in this northern residential section, initially, they were more small stormwater basins surrounded entirely by residential lots. They have consolidated some of those basins into large stormwater basins. These, this is about nine acres of land for these three ponds. They've put them in locations where everyone who lives or visits the neighborhood can enjoy the view of the, the open water and the surrounding upland buffers and the wetland plants, the littoral plants. They provided for walking trails around the flowway, but nonetheless, staff has, believes that further modifications could better comply with both the comp plan and the Land Development So for example, in the staff report, so here's an example of some flowway alternatives or some tweaks that would help make the flowway more consistent. One is to ensure that these are connected, not just by a small pipe, but that they are, you know, a bridge or culverts providing a full four-foot of clearance so that the ducks can move from one pond to another, that potentially someone on a kayak could move from one pond to another. Additionally, because there's the canals along the north, the canal along the east, and, and the plan has provided for small open space here, this little open space provides the potential for pedestrian connectivity to the north, and so if this flowway could be extended, the idea of the linear path that is anticipated with the flowway could Again, looking at that northern, this is a really rough sketch. If, if we take their nine and a half acres of ponds in the flowway, and we put it along the northern boundary line, it would have a flowway that's 100 feet wide along the whole northern section. And then, you know, the required littoral zones and the upland buffer could provide a beautiful sidewalk or linear path. That would also be adjacent to the existing canal, which the water is about 40 feet wide, the canal is in an 80-foot right-of-way. So while this water and this water at this point would not be intended to interact, except to the extent that this development is, will be discharging to the canal, but in the meantime, if some new development is presented from the north, they too could locate their flowway along their southern property line, and the result would be a, a wide wildlife corridor with the potential for linear bicycle paths and pedestrian paths along both sides. It could go down to Indrio Road and be a mile long. So here, it's illustrated again, if we were to move the flowway to the outside of the parcel, that would also be consistent with the idea that the Planned Retail Workplace allows for the fringe transect zone, that the flowway could be located in the fringe transect zone. Would also provide for potential future connectivity to the canals as they go north, and, and provide a, a great interconnected bicycle and wildlife corridor. And this is an early illustration of also showing how the, the canal network is interconnected and could be, serve as the basis for the flowway system. The other idea about locating the flowway adjacent to the canals, even though at this point in time, there's no ability, because of the way the stormwater regulations are and the way property owners are responsible for the volume and the cleanliness and the rate of discharge from their property, they're not in any position to take water out of that canal and agree to treat it in the flowway. But maybe in the future, you know, as time evolves and we are better able to study this, it would, providing for the flowway to be adjacent to the canal corridors may make that more feasible. So these are just ideas that staff believes may help implement the comp plan policies and the LDC more consistently.
Ms. Settlemeyer, Mr. Chairman, may I ask you a question? After two years in all these flowways and such have you, eat up with hyacinths and cattails and LAD, who's going to maintain those damn things?
Well, the, the individual developer, at this point, the, the property, it remains part of the, the property of the, of the community, of the development, and they'll be responsible for maintaining, keeping the invasive species out.
Like all the other sediment ponds around the county that nobody takes care of?
Vice Chair Lowndes, members of the commission, if, if I may, that, that has been a notable talking point through the workshops and feedback that staff has garnered over the years as to, you know, that the original vision was for there to be, become an entity that, that provided guidance, management, regulation, and partnership with the property owners as well as the regional water control districts. And so that, that entity has, has not been created, but certainly still a, a component and a concept.
Don't put the teeth in the, in the basis of it, it won't get done. Homeowners associations won't do it. You leave it up to the drainage districts, they don't care, it's not theirs, and they're not going to do it. The county dams aren't going to do it, you can't even clean out Ten Mile Creek. Sir?
Thank you for the feedback.
Brian, Brian Arbiter from the Environmental Resources Department has joined us, particularly on the flowway issue as well.
Yeah, I think our job is to interpret, the standards are laid out in the code. In terms of maintenance, I think that's another discussion point, but in terms of interpreting the code and applying it to this development, I think there was more opportunity to, you know, provide connection between the stormwater areas. It's important to have a large wildlife corridor that acts as a linear park versus independent stormwater areas, and that's what we're trying to achieve with bridge culverts and the connections shown on this display.
Quick question, quick question. So then, with the environmental department, do you guys prefer the connectivity this way or the channelized canal around the property?
The channelized canal is more in line with our vision, but we're willing to be flexible this way. It's just, we haven't been provided these bridge culvert options yet by the applicant.
When it comes to like nutrient absorption, would it be better to have more pond like this? When you channelize the water and you move it very fast, wouldn't it absorb less nutrients than having?
Yeah, and that's a water quality issue, which is a public works issue, so go ahead, Corey, you can comment on that.
Commissioner Binner, I, I think we would modify the, the language. It, it would not be a channelized canal. There would need to be a low-grade slope, littoral planting, shelf, essentially creation of marsh, the goal of it to be meandering, not, not something that's rigid and prescribed at 30 feet in width and 12 feet in depth, but, but have the ability for slow movement and water filtration. And so not, not specifically channelized, but I, I think the, the concept exhibit that Irene presented shows it along the perimeter, but with some shape to it, and, and not, again, in a, a very rigid way here.
Thank you. Hey, Alex. So I just want an additional, so staff, another small, some tweaks that, about the regulating plan. So it, it shows the potential connectivity in the future here, perhaps for pedestrian connectivity here, perhaps for vehicular connectivity, to get that robust street network that is required so that people have more than one way to get from A to B, and so that we don't overload our main roads. Also, with the more connectivity, the more walkable places, and also to the east, there is the possibility for future roadway connectivity. So that concludes staff's presentation. Our recommendation is that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Board of County Commissioners a recommendation of approval regarding the proposed amendment of the zoning atlas from Ag One to Planned Retail Workplace, and approval of the Preliminary Regulating Plan with conditions. So I do want to just draw, after the staff report was issued, we, we had an opportunity to discuss some items with the applicants, and I would suggest we are still recommending approval subject to conditions. One, the flowway being resigned, redesigned to comply with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations. With regard to two, we talked about inconsistency of proposed street types. We would suggest that that condition instead read, staff and the applicant will explore hybrid street sections to provide on-street, for on-street loading and unloading and deliveries near the entrances to the apartment buildings in the apartment area, and also to identify street sections for the residential area, both in the east and in the north, that recognize the frequent, expected crossings by driveways. Number four and number six, the conditions about open space in the eastern section were somewhat redundant, and staff is suggesting that they be consolidated, and that condition would be that the regulating plan should be revised to provide usable open space in the eastern section, that it shall be expanded, excuse me, that the usable open space in the eastern section shall be expanded and functionality increased. And then with regard to condition number seven, that it would be a note added to the regulating plan that bus stops will be accommodated in the future, as drafted in, in the conditions. Now that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you for your patience.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah.
Okay, none.
Hold on. Are we going to have a presentation from the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Please come forward.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Brad Curry. I'm with Engineering Design and Construction. Tonight, I'm representing the contract purchaser of 177-acre piece of property located on the northeast corner of Indrio and I-95. As we previously discussed, we have two applications before this commission tonight. The first is the text amendment, you did hear staff's presentation and our presentation on that. The second application is the rezone to PRW, and that's what we're presenting now. Staff did an excellent job presenting both applications. It's been a pleasure working with them. You guys can only imagine how much work it takes to get us to this point, how many meetings we've had, how many revisions have been done to the plans, and I really appreciate staff's hard work on that. Doesn't get here very easily. There's several members of our team here tonight. You've already met Kara Wood with District Planning Group, Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture is here as well. You guys might find it interesting to know that Jennifer Morton was my very first boss as a planner, so you're getting to meet the, the lady who trained me tonight. With, with us as well is Dean Rosenbach and Pat Madden. They are the contract purchasers for the property, so they will be the ones that hopefully be either developing this or selling it off. And then lastly, is Susan O'Rourke with O'Rourke Engineering. She's our traffic engineer for the project. So we have a full team here tonight. We're all available for answering any questions that you may have after, after, after we're done presenting. As I introduced the members of the team, it reminds me of a joke I heard one time. How many land planners does it take to get a rezoning approved in the TVC? So we have three land planners on the, on us, with us right now, and I don't remember the punchline of that, but I hope the number is three. So, so we, again, we do have a pretty comprehensive team here with us tonight. We did a brief PowerPoint, some of the slides are redundant, what staff did, I will breeze through those, and I'll begin with a quick overview of the property. Again, location's northeast corner, you see it there in red, existing future land use is TVC, all three parcels, and then the existing zoning is Ag One, and again, we're proposing to rezone it to PRW, sorry. So we'll look, the intent of showing how big this area is, is that the overall intent is that you'll have these rezonings throughout the, throughout the property. So we're surrounded by, by the Ag One now, but the intent, I know there's an application further to the north of us that would also change the zoning. Staff showed this map, and, and I think it's an important map. We, I think you guys have heard me say this a couple of times over the last couple of months, that when, when we start, you know, our job is, is fun and, and it's interesting, and there's a lot of things that we have to look at in order to come up with a plan. We just sit and dream it up overnight. And, but where we really start is, is at the land use designation. What, what a density are we allowed to have on this property? Now, now I didn't start there. The, the property owner started there. So the property owner bought this property expecting what kind of density he was going to get on the property, and he put a sales price on that property based on what he thought he was going to be able to get for density. Again, based on this map before you, that the nine units per acre in the lighter color and the five units per acre in the darker color. And my client has the property under contract based on that future land use designation. So everything that we've done, the application that you heard before, is typically based on the future land use. Not that we're guaranteed that, but that's what the expectation is. Someone, I always tell my staff, the person who came up that five units and nine units per acre that's required or that's proposed on this property was the smartest person in the world, and who are we to question what that person decided was on there? Now, I know that that's a little bit naive, but that's the way we typically look at the future land use, is that, that's what the intent of the person who developed this map was for this property, and so that's what we're trying to implement at this time. And so that's what we're trying to implement at this time. Um, I did want to mention, you know, our property is there in yellow. You're going to see other applications. I always give you guys a little bit of foreshadowing on what's to come or what has come. And, and you have seen or will be seeing additional applications in this area that may be outside of the urban services area. That's important. We are inside the urban services area. We have water and sewer to our property right now. It's just a minor extension to get water and sewer to our property. Other properties that come before you that may be requesting additional density above and beyond what this, what this chart says, we aren't requesting anything above what this chart says. There may be other applications coming before you that are requesting additional density and that are requesting to have water and sewer extended to them even though they're outside the urban services area. Just want you to keep that in mind, because I think that, and this application is a good application. We've taken into account that we aren't increasing the land use over what was originally intended. And we are within the urban services area, and we do have water and sewer right to our property. This is an overall breakdown of the three different parcels. Total property is one point, is a hun- is a hundred and seventy-seven acres. All in, we're about thousand and ninety units in the, in the two residential areas and about four hundred thousand square feet of commercial. Again, that is a density overall of about six point one units to the acre for the entire property. Um, this was the text amendment code that Kara was going to present, but I'm going to skip that because I think she did a great job explaining what our proposal was. Next, I'm going to bring up, um, Jennifer Morton. And Jennifer will go through the overall, the, the regulating plan, preliminary plan, whichever you want to call it. And then at the end of it, I'll come up and go over the conditions of approval and have a conclusion.
Thank you, Brad. Jennifer Morton with Jay Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I appreciate the opportunity to present the regulating plan to, uh, this board. And Irene kind of went over the, um, the breakdown of the master plan, the property. As you can see, is, uh, the hundred and seventy-seven acres is bisected. We have an east side, which is bisected by Colbergard, and then we have a west side. Then on the west side, that property is bisected by Spanish Lakes. So we have developed the property really in those four kind of quadrants. And when we first started this plan, as Irene mentioned, it looked very different. We had a gated community. Our lakes were centrally located. Most of the lots were amenitized by the, the water bodies. And so as we had our pre-application meeting, we got into the TVC. We brought on Kara Wood as the expert on the TVC. And we continued to work on the plan, develop the plan, worked with staff. And I'm really proud of the plan that we are presenting to you today. We incorporated the elements of the TVC while also working with the builder community, being able to have a project that once it gets approved, that the builders can build and we will be able to offer product to the residents of St. Lucie County. Whoops. Okay, so we heard, you heard earlier throughout, at both presentations on the TVC, the importance of walkability, the, um, emphasis on the pedestrian as primary, also, um, bicycle circulation, and then the vehicle was secondary. So we took that to heart. We identified, you can see on this graphic, in yellow, we've identified where all our sidewalks are. Every street has a sidewalk on both sides. We, um, incorporated a sidewalk network also in the commercial area so that not only are the individual neighborhoods connected by sidewalks, the sidewalk system connects the neighborhoods to the commercial. And then our sidewalk network picks up where St. Lucie County stopped along Indrio Road. There's an existing sidewalk on the north side of Indrio, east of Colbergard. We're extending that sidewalk to the west of Colbergard into our development, a multi-use path. We all know the importance of walkability. Everybody wants to be outside. Uh, it was really, um, after COVID, the, um, emphasis on parks and open space, people wanting to ride their bikes and walk their dogs outside. So this community is geared towards the pedestrian first. Um, you heard a little bit about the flowway. And this flowway was something that we worked really hard on. We read the definitions in the Comprehensive Plan in the TVC language, trying to work with staff. As I mentioned, our water bodies were originally located internal to the development. Typically, uh, what you see in most of your standard development communities where the water bodies are central, the residential units wrap those. And those lots are, are, um, premium lots. So the developer gets a premium for the lots that are on the water. We took a different approach after studying the TVC. We actually moved our lakes to make them more publicly accessible. So we moved our lakes to be a long Spanish Lakes Boulevard. The other thing that we did is instead of having long, narrow lakes, we have nice, big, wide lakes. And our lakes, um, surrounding the lakes, we have, uh, pedestrian circulation as well. So if, um, so we have the circulation that along the, the lakes, along Spanish Lakes, Spanish Lakes Boulevard, we have circulation. And it also goes into these very large lakes that are four acres, five acres, and six acres in size. As I mentioned, these lakes are publicly accessible. I know a lot of the communities are gated communities. This is not a gated community. The lakes and the infrastructure are all accessible by the public. Also, as part of our pedestrian connectivity, staff requested that we connect to the neighborhoods to the north and to the, or the undeveloped property to the north and the undeveloped property to the east. And we are providing, uh, the potential for a pedestrian connection. We also have very wide view corridors. So not only are, are residents experiencing the flowway and water bodies, when you drive along Spanish Lakes Boulevard, you have views of the water. When you turn into the development, you have nice vistas, either green space or views onto the water bodies. We have adequate open space on both the east and west side. Our open space is incorporated in the neighborhoods, but also along Indrio Road, we have a nice wide landscape buffer and a multi-use path. So now I'm going to focus on the neighborhoods. I think by identifying, uh, the potential development style for these neighborhoods, it will address some of the, um, text amendment comments that I heard for, um, earlier. So we have our single-family home neighborhood to the northwest. We are working with builders and we're trying to develop products that, um, a home, the home types that are going to be utilized in this neighborhood. Uh, one of the things that, um, staff brought up and you saw it in the list of options for, that was discussed in the tax, text amendment, was to have, um, two, although you have a two-car garage, each garage stands on its own. It als- it helps to make that facade, um, de-emphasize the garage and emphasize the, um, architectural style. We also are proposing front porches and other elements that, that make this neighborhood unique. Then we have the northeast neighborhood. We're proposing townhomes and a small lot, single-family, uh, unit. We are proposing that our townhomes utilize the alleyway product. That was in an element of the TVC. We wanted to try to incorporate that into our project. So we modified our original plan and our townhouses are accessed on an alley. Um, in addition, our alleys are one-way, so that keeps up with the, the quality of the alley. So we've put a lot of thought into the overall design for the project. And then we have a small lot, single-family. This neighborhood would be perfect for a first-time home buyer. And this is just a little bit of, uh, what I would call imagery or character sketch, sketches showing the townhouses with the front porch, with the, the sidewalk in front, or maybe a small lot, single-family home, one-car garage, a great starter home. The third neighborhood is the, uh, multifamily neighborhood located on the southeast side of the project. One of the things staff requested was on-street parking for the multifamily. So we will be incorporating on-street parking through this neighborhood. Again, we have a lake with a pedestrian trail system. So we are taking many of those elements that the TVC, uh, encourages us to utilize and applied them to this, um, to, as part of our design standards. Open space and rec- recreational area. Again, I just want to emphasize the fact that we have, uh, over an acre and a half of rec area. We'll have a clubhouse, a resort-style pool, a lot of recreational amenities in addition to the walking trails and the top lots. As far as the, um, parks, this project would generate over two million dollars of impact fee just for the park, um, just for parks, in addition to what we're providing onsite. And finally, the commercial parcel. We worked really hard on the commercial parcel. We're going to have a main street. We're going to have on-street parking. Our buildings are going to front the street with the parking behind it. We, um, worked with staff on some examples of existing commercial developments that we've modeled, uh, this, this, uh, design after. And so we've been able to, again, incorporating the elements that are in the TVC with, within our development project. And finally, I just have two more slides. Um, I mentioned, uh, open space and landscaping is important. We are incorporating multi-use paths along, um, both Spanish Lakes and Indrio. And then we have the typical landscape buffers all around the perimeter of the property. And, um, I'm going to turn it over to Brad Curry and he'll finish it up with the conditions of approval.
Thanks, Jennifer. Staff quickly went over the, I believe there's eight conditions and, and I, and I've listed them in my presentation here. I plan on going one by one, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, the first condition of approval on the screen is regards to the flowway. You saw staff's proposed redesign that they did earlier. There were the, the ditch or canal went along the north and the, and the east property lines. You know, as I stated previously, we have many different variables that we look at when it comes to designing a site. When you first look at the site, you don't realize that it's about four feet lower than the road. And the entire site has to be brought up about four feet. That's more, it's double the amount of what we normally see in, in this, in St. Lucie County. So we need more lakes, bigger lakes than what you normally would have on a site. The, a narrow lake, the minimum that South Florida Water Management District allows you to have is a hundred feet. With a hundred-foot lake, you can't go very deep because you have to take into account the, the steepness of the sizes it goes down. And if you, if you did a hundred-foot wide lake, you wouldn't go, be able to go very deep. You wouldn't be able to get very much fill. What we've tried to do is create square, I know they're not very, um, appealing sometimes, but a square rectangle lake is an engineer's dream. They can get plenty of water out of it, I mean, plenty of fill out of it, and it's deep. What we're able to do though is have these bigger square lakes while still maintaining the littoral zone that's required by the county and the upland buffer requirement of the county. So having a long, narrow lake, in my opinion, is not, is not, it does not, will not work for this property. It makes this property undevelopable. Import and fill would be, could be up to seven or eight million dollars in fill if we didn't have, if we weren't able to get the fill off the site. Again, that's a site constraint that determines what the design of the site's going to be. We request number one, to be completely removed. We don't believe that we need to redesign the flowway. We think the flowway that we've provided provides pedestrian accessibility, public accessibility, and is, and it isn't, and, and it is consistent with the TVC code. I was, I was just, um, talking with Kara right before the meeting and she showed me a policy in the Comprehensive Plan, policy eleven point one point six point seven. And I don't have it written down specifically, but what I thought was interesting about it was that it started out by saying that within six months of the adoption of the TVC, there was going to be a public entity created to manage a stormwater in this area. And I think we heard that this went into effect in two thousand and nine. That public agency has not been started yet. Probably why the flowway has, has so much resistance with, with property owners, because it's just very, very difficult to do. Um, comment number two. We will provide a additional amended street section. As Irene stated, we will have, uh, on-street par- it's on-street parking, on-street loading and unloading at the entrances to the multifamily. We are good with that condition. Comment number three has to do with the access on, uh, on Indrio. We show an access point. It was kind of probably hard to see a right-in or right, right-in and right-out on the west side of Colbergard. That's within DOT's area for ninety-five. We have put a request into them. We understand if we don't get that approval from DOT, we won't be able to have that access. Comment number four talks about open space. Jennifer's presentation did a very good job explaining that we have over thirty-two acres of open space on this property. In addition, we have the rec areas. There's a rec area for the, for the single-family, small lot, townhouses on the north side, as well as a separate rec area for the, the apartment complex as well. So there is onsite recreation, there is, um, onsite open space, walking trails, that sort of thing, as well as, uh, we did the calculation for the impact fees, for parks' impact fees, and about two point one million dollars in park impact fees will be generated as part of this project. So we don't believe that there's additional outdoor recreation space warranted on this property. We believe we've provided enough. Sorry, I want to go back. Comment number five. There's a sidewalk currently on the north side of Spanish Lakes Boulevard. There's not a sidewalk on the south side. There's a line of power poles along the south side of Spanish Lakes Boulevard. The condition that is there now says that they want a, um, a six-foot sidewalk on the south side of Spanish Lakes. That would be near impossible because of the power lines. I guess it's, nothing's impossible. I think I heard somebody say that earlier tonight. But it would be very expensive to move those power lines. So what we would rather do is if we, if we can't fit it in the right-of-way, we would propose to have it onsite. Um, we have a buffer section proposed along that portion of, of, um, Spanish Lakes. That's a twenty-foot buffer with a six-foot sidewalk in it. So if we can't put it in the right-of-way, we would put it within our buffer. So we are okay with that condition, having a sidewalk along Spanish Lakes. Uh, as Irene stated, comment number six is a little bit redundant. Again, we believe we're providing enough, uh, functional open space on the property as well as, um, recreation space for the community. Comment number seven, we do show a transit stop on the northwest corner of Colbergard and Indrio. There was some discussion about whether or not that was the best place for it. I, again, we're very early in the, in the stages of this, of this proposal. We're okay with the condition that says we have to provide a transit stop in the future. And the location, the exact location can be determined at the time of final site plan. And then comment number eight was reference to some calculations on the, um, regulating plan, open space section. And we'll correct that as well. So out of all the eight conditions, really the, the, the only one, I guess, we, we think there should be three deleted, but it's really only two, hate to confuse things. The flowway, we don't believe we need to redesign that. And then in addition, the additional, um, functional open space or outdoor space, we don't think we, we require that as well. So I always like to tell this commission what the next steps are. I think you've heard a little bit about that. This application, these two applications, the text amendment and the, and the rezone will go to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. And then after that, we would have to submit a final site plan. We are, we need to talk a little bit about phasing. We probably won't come in for one final site plan for the whole thing. We think we might have up to four final site plans. One for the northwest section, one for the northeast section, one for the southeast section, and one for the commercial. We'll talk about that, but that's a process, final site plan. You previously heard from me that that is an administrative process that's approved by staff. That's part of the carrots that, that's given as part of the TVC. And then you'll have to plat, you'll have to plat this property. All of those lots will have to be subdivided through a plat application. That will be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And then the last step would be, uh, as we've talked about, site development permit, which is when you actually go in and, and have the construction plan for the site development of the site. So in conclusion, I, you know, our attempt tonight was to try to explain that, you know, we, we, I respect the TVC. The TVC's been a part of my planning career here in St. Lucie County. You know, I, I started up here in two thousand and three when the TVC was just starting and it became in effect in two thousand and nine. The TVC's been a part of my career here in, in St. Lucie County. I do not know that getting rid of the TVC is the right thing. I think what we attempted to do was to make some amendments to the TV- I think what we attempted to do was to make some amendments to the TVC that create a, a project that's, that can be built. A project that, that home builders will build. A project that, you know, meets the drainage requirements and the access requirements. And so, I think in combination for the plans that you saw tonight and the text amendments that you saw tonight, we believe that we've taken what we think are the problems parts of the TVC. We have tried to address those through the text amendment, and we've prepared a plan that we believe meets the intent. Or, it's keeping in the spirit. I was, I was trying to Google terms about keeping in the spirit and respect and as consistent as possible. I mean, those are the types of things I want to be able to say. We're doing the best that we believe we can do to create a project that can be built and sold and be successful here in, in St. Lucie County. While it might not be perfect in everyone's eyes, we think it does represent what the TVC, what a, a project in the TVC can look like in today's market considerations. I did want to mention that we had a neighborhood meeting last, on, this past Monday. We sent out about 24 letters, and that's including letters to the commissioners as well as to staff. And we only had one commissioner show up, and staff showed up as well. We had no residents show up at the neighborhood meeting on Monday. So, I just wanted to mention that because I don't think staff said that in their presentation. And again, we have our full team here tonight to answer any questions that you have regarding the project, and we respectfully request approval, recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? The board?
Mr. Chair? Question for staff. Can we take, excuse me, do you have an aerial of this?
Commissioner Odell, would, would this be a sufficient aerial?
I think it would be, uh, well, it's, is there a large truck stop proposed for this area?
Commissioner Odell, St. Lucie County Planning and Development Services held a pre-application conference alongside the Development Review Committee, which explored a very sizable fueling facility, primarily catering, though, to consumer vehicles in size. And, and that petition site, at least the subject to the pre-application meeting, was due south on the south side of Indrio Road, east of I-95.
So, how close would it be to this development?
Assuming the Indrio Road right-of-way in this particular area is in the ballpark of 120 to 140 feet, that, that ballpark. Both would have had, both would utilize Cobal Guard Road as access. This petition site, before you on-screen, would, would access existing roadways that have been completed in Spanish Lakes Boulevard and Cobal Guard with some improvements. But the alternative project that was referenced, south of Indrio Road, would need to construct and improve the, the south side of Cobal Guard Road.
Yeah, I was just thinking about the traffic. Once that project goes in, I, I don't know, how, how many fuel, fueling stations was it going to have?
Over 100.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Might make for a little traffic problem here, wouldn't you say? Are there any other proposed developments in this area?
Yes.
There is the Indrio Groves Hamlet, proposed to the north on 1,000 plus or minus acres. That explored upwards of 3,000 dwelling units that this body evaluated, at least through the, the text amendment.
Going back to a, a previous problem, we wanted to make sure that the board was informed of all the activity in this area. Thank you.
Any other question?
Chair. On the proposed development, to fit that many units on the east side, how big are the lots going to be? Does applicant know?
Yes, so we have a combination of townhouse lots. The small-lot, single-family is 100 by 30. And then, we have the multifamily. That's what we're anticipating.
How long, how many units per multifamily building?
It was, um,
Is it going to be 10 townhomes? It's going to be four with a break and four? Are you guys planning like possibly 20 townhomes long or?
So, if you can, on the slide, you'll see that we have the, the townhouses with the alleyway, rear-loaded alleyways, and the perimeter is wrapped with the single-family.
Like, how many units do you think would fit in that line of unbroken townhomes?
It might be two, two eight-unit buildings. I, or it could be three six-unit buildings, you know, I don't have the...
It wouldn't just be one long building?
No. Most, um, for the townhouses, the odd numbers, like five and seven, they tend to, it looks good from the street. And the longest townhouse I've done is an eight-unit townhouse. But the more smaller units you have, you have more end units, and end units are more valuable. So, if they can break it down and have, you know, three, five units rather than two eight-units, that would be the builder's preference.
And then, can you pull the picture up of what, like, the facades, with the garages, look like?
I don't have the, um, what the rear, the alleyway garage would look, are you talking about for the townhouses?
Well, like this picture here. So, like, these, these houses with the one and two-car garages.
Yes.
This would be an example of where you'd want to go exceed 60% of the front elevation of garage door.
Yes, that lower picture right there.
Basically, three doors on the front of a house.
Yes.
And that's it. No porch, no nothing.
No, they would, we would have a porch. Like, these are just a, a flavor. This is the first blush that we got from the architect. And, we're asking for, um, not really a front porch, but a breezeway so that it extends in front of the garage. The architect's working on that. And I just want to add, we're only requesting about 20% of the homes. No more than 20% would be able to have a two-car garage. The majority of the units would be one-car garage.
And then, if you're doing 30-foot-wide lots on single-family homes, what type of spacing are there going to be between the houses?
It's five feet.
Two and a half feet per house, or five feet and five feet for a total of 10?
It's five feet, and the house is actually 25 feet wide, and there's five feet in between.
So, two and a half per side of the house?
Mm-hmm.
So, you could take a really large step between roof to roof.
It's a small lot. It helps someone get into a single-family home, you know, they're for, a first-time homebuyer, um, you know.
But how does that, I mean, I get the whole TVC thing, but how does that conform to the intent of TVC to not have a garagescape or to, to, you know, like, it doesn't seem like it conforms at all?
So, the TVC, and the TVC, okay, thanks. The TVC, you'll notice that we, we balanced that with our townhouse product that had, that's alley-loaded. So, when you're on that street, one side of the street is front, the, the front of the townhouses. If you go back to that elevation, you have no garages. And then, the other side of the street, primarily, you will have a one-car garage. So, we can create a very nice streetscape. You've got sidewalks on both sides. You have the trees. You have the six- or eight-foot-wide planted grass areas on either side. The street cross-section is probably, I think it was 48 feet in wide. It's, we're utilizing the TVC cross-section for that. And actually, we're adding on-street parking on one side. Again, another element that the TVC requested.
And on the townhomes, are they two-car garages or one-car garages?
I, I'm not sure. I think, I'm not sure.
And then, how big would the alleyway be since it's one-way? How wide of a paved surface are you?
We meet, the, the TVC has a street type for alleyways, and we're following the prototype for the alleyway. I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't know if you've been to Abacoa and Jupiter at all, but, um, though, it's similar to that alleyway product there. I pulled up the specs for that alleyway and specifically tried to design it so that it's one-way. So, it doesn't, so if someone doesn't try and park a car on the alley, that the cars are all parked in the driveways behind the townhouse units.
So, the alley, so the driveways, or the, the garage is going to be pretty much at the alley, so there is no room for a car? Essentially, is that like how compact this is going to be?
So, as Jennifer stated, what, we, you know, we, we, we do a lot of projects, and we spend a lot of times, most of the time, talking about roadway sections. You know, where the sidewalk's going to go, how wide the lanes are, where the park is going to go. What we tried to do with this application, one of the nice things, you might quote me on this about the TVC, is that they lay out all across the section, road sections that you can do. And you, you, again, it's like a menu. You pick out, this is an alley that's been approved by St. Lucie County. It's in their code, and that's what we're proposing. If we make changes to any of those street sections, the engineering department has to be involved. The planning department has to be involved, the ERD, everybody. So, if we can pick it out of the code, in theory, and it's already been approved by everyone. So, this alley discussion that we're having, we showed an alley. We showed the street type on our regulating plan. That's what we have to do. We have to follow the code.
I'm just thinking, like, is it like, so is there still a driveway behind the townhome? Or is it literally the back of the house with the garage underneath it and a one-lane alleyway in be, in between?
You wouldn't be able to turn into the garage if that were the case.
There is a, um, like, a, I don't want to say curb area, but there's a flat area. So, you have the alleyway that, let's say it's 12 feet. And then, you might have an apron, what I would call an apron. And then, some townhouses would have a longer apron that could be, um, you know, five feet. And then, some townhouses might actually have a driveway in their rear. And then, you've got the garage. The townhouse unit has not been designed. That's why I have images of, from Abacoa and from Waterly and some of these communities that are traditional neighborhood developments that have utilized this product. So, we're not proposing to reinvent the wheel. We're trying to utilize homes and homes that have been built in other communities and incorporate them in, in this project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, would you compare it to, like, tradition? The townhouses, the single-family homes with the alleyways in the back?
Yes, sir, that's the intention. Tradition, I believe, has enough for a car, just very similar to that, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And they're one-way too, I believe, in tradition.
Right.
Any other question from the effort? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody have any comments or they'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Lustburg. I live at 14299 Dahlia in Spanish Lakes. And I'm very concerned about all the traffic. We have a lot of projects going on over there. I think that we mentioned a few of them. I believe that there are more. I believe there's another large project further down on Indrio. Okay? I also like to point out that Spanish Lakes Boulevard is a two-lane road. It dead-ends into Spanish Lakes, which is a retirement community. Okay? You have a community there of 55 and older people. Okay? About 1,500 of us. Okay? That's our only way in and out is Spanish Lakes Boulevard. There's no other exit. You're putting all this traffic around us. I under, I've, I've heard, okay, that through that gas station, they anticipate 12,000 cars per day. How many cars are you going to put on Indrio Road? I mean, what happens if there's an emergency? You get one of these rains like you've seen in Fort Lauderdale, like you recently saw at Felsman. What's going to happen when all these people are trying to get out? What, how, how do you get out in Spanish Lakes, the fairways? How do you get out of there? With all of these people coming onto Spanish Lakes Boulevard? I would at least like to think that maybe you would look at some of this, and some of this would get taken into consideration with what you're doing over in that area. You're putting a lot of cars on the road. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, close the public? Take it back to the board for discussion or motion? I would start on, should we approve, do E or D first?
I just have some general discussion things I can have set.
Right.
So, as a landowner, I would want to maximize my density to increase market value. And I'm pro-capitalist to the nines, but that's not my position on the board. At the end of the day, we're here to give our opinion and insight on what's going to make an aesthetically pleasing and measured growth to our community. 30-foot lot and 25-foot-wide houses, just bigger than a two-car garage in width? I mean, I get that the density is there, but I don't know the guy that wrote the map, and I don't know how smart the guy was that put the number on it to blindly trust and have faith that they knew what was best for St. Lucie County and what type of housing product we were going to get, get assigned, get presented to us in 2023. And at the end of the day, too, yet, out of the open space, most of that's lake. Only six acres out of all these four quadrants is actually green space. So, you barely have any green space. You're going to have five-foot separation between houses. I mean, Bedford Park and Eastlake Village are two communities that have alleyways, detached and attached garages that are accessed by alleyways. Kayo Vinian is selling out every home they're, they're building to finish out Eastlake Village right now after Kennedy left it high and dry. Bedford Park, I'm, that, that all sold. It's all alleyways, detached garages. They got in-law suites behind the single families with detached garages. The townhomes all have garages off the back. So, there is a market for that. But from a landowner's perspective, we keep getting, we keep getting these projects coming in with shrinking down the lot sizes, which reduces the, I get it. It reduces the amount of feet I'm paving roads, the amount of feet I'm running water sewer, and sewer lines, the amount of feet I'm making for sidewalks because I can condense everything really, really tight, which increases my market value. That's great. At the end of the day, we're going to be left with this inventory of housing in these communities that, in my opinion, don't look good at all. And at the end of the day, out of all four quadrants, you have six acres of actual green space. I mean, that's one and a half acres between all of them. It's all pavement. It's all concrete. Five feet between your house, you might as well not even have windows on the side because you're never going to get a, a sliver of sunlight coming through. I mean, literally, it's going to be that close. You can open your window and hand your neighbor a salt shaker. That's, to me, 2023, that's ridiculous. I'm all for making money, but if we keep pushing all the densities, we keep allowing all these compromises with really, really tight, I mean, literally, it's surrounded by acres and acres of ag land, right? Like, there's got to be a better way, in my opinion. It just doesn't, it seems crazy to always be focusing on increasing, maximizing density, and then we keep shrinking these lot sizes down. We're not landlocked in downtown Miami or in downtown Palm Beach. It's literally all ag land around there. There's got to be a better way to come up with something that's better for our community than this, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other question?
Yes. So, one of the things that I'm reminded of, every time we talk about flowway, is the Green Necklace in Boston. And Boston is famous for being really marshy, really low, really wet. And so, they came up with, I think it was Frederick Lomstead, right? Came up with the Green Necklace, interconnecting ponds and flowways and marshlands to help drain areas for suburban development in the Boston metro area. And it's gorgeous. It's a beautiful asset to the community. Square ponds, not so much. Little bridges over canals connecting ponds, perhaps. But I wouldn't, it, this all sends me back to your comment, Mr. Arbiter, and what James Taylor offered us to watch, which was The Way of the Panther. Is that what it was called?
Mm-hmm.
All, the whole idea of... All, the whole idea of connecting wildlife corridors. And the waterways that you have are an excellent opportunity for that. And they don't all have to be skinny little shallow lakes. We can be more creative than that. We can have green spaces and carve out parkland big enough to play a game of kickball with your kids and their friends or do the sandlot if they're really creative. Need a really big dog, but anyway. And then take bigger ponds, bigger lakes, get the soil out that you need for fill and then interconnect them through this sort of chain of lakes idea. It's all together so that wildlife can move past and through and along this chain of lakes. No, it's not a fancy entranceway into your suburban development. No, it's not. And we don't have gates here, thank goodness, in the T V C. But you're, you're missing an opportunity by just looking at it as the single most efficient way to drag soil out to fill the property. We can do something more elegant than this. We can provide for our wildlife at the same time as well as the kids growing up in the neighborhood that need a place to play. It's not all, you know, retirees riding their bikes and their trikes around or taking their dog for a walk. There's, there's kids, especially when you've got the smaller homes and the multifamily. I agree entirely with Mr. Benner. Thirty-foot wide lots for small homes. I mean, if you're gonna make the lots that tiny, these need to be like little shotgun shacks. Otherwise, it's, it's, it's awful. You've got these little skinny dark dirt paths that turn into dog runs with air conditioning compressor units in them. There's nothing between the houses. You'd be better off doing more townhomes. They look great. You've got the alleyways, the streetscape is lovely, there's enough density. You know, I would put more of that product together than these postage stamp houses that are so crammed. And to, to have all of these front-loading garages on such tiny lots, I don't care if it's one door or two, it's, it's really garagescape, no doubt, okay? When you've got, and I appreciate the fact that you've got some that are across the street from the townhouses, so you don't have as many driveways breaking through. But I, I, I really, I don't think the thirty-foot wide lot, single-family home product is, is gonna fly with this board.
Thank you.
And I, I, one, one other thing that I wanna bring up, which is, the essence of the T V C is the transect and walkability. And I'm not seeing that here. I am seeing walking paths, but there's no transect. There's, there's a commercial zone and there's a residential zone. And there's not this respect for interconnectedness at all. It's completely cut off. And I appreciate that your commercial zone can be a big shopping center. But if you look more at Abacoa, you have commercial with residential above it. And there's, there's really no, no relief in that commercial area and no connectedness to the other locations. So I, I feel like this needs an overhaul. And perhaps you've done that several times already, but I don't think you're there yet.
Thank you. Chair, let me ask you a question. If there's a disagreement on this, on E, the, the E, that we go vote on, uh, the last one, how's it gonna affect it? Should we turn this down?
Chair, low members of the commission, uh, D, nine D is policy-related modifications of the Land Development Code text amendment. Um, I think the, the specific components of that, um, that may correlate to this project relates to the, the width of the driveways and garages and, and clarifications within the, those design components. Uh, nine E is the rezoning from the Agricultural One zoning district to the planned retail workplace in this preliminary regulating plan that's on screen now. They, they are independent petitions. There's some correlating components as it relates to what, what design elements could be provided in nine E. But I, I don't think they, they are directly contingent upon each other. I think there's some, some mutual exclusivity.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Benton, uh, wouldn't those changes, from what I've seen, uh, increase the density, which is what we were talking about earlier?
Uh, nine E, the petition for rezoning would increase, um, the zoning districts' density from one unit per acre to, um, the, the six and change blended across the entire project. But the, the amendments in nine D don't provide nine E the ability to, to seek additional density bonuses. Um, the, the density pursued is consistent with the, uh, transfer development value map, um, that the T V C prescribes for these lands, which is nine dwelling units per acre and five dwelling units per acre.
Thank you.
Chair. So I like Ms. Slack's opinion of tabling it because they got all the T V C stuff going on anyway. Why are we meddling with it whenever they're in the middle of trying to re-haul, revamp it all anyways? There are stuff in D that are good, like the single garage doors that's nice and stuff, but you guys seen the picture of what a sixty percent front coverage of garage door looks like. And if we say good, okay to D today, then that means somebody can come in and put thirty-foot wide lots, twenty-five-foot wide houses and have two single garage doors and a front door and that's it for the first floor of a home. I mean, I'm not into approving something like that. I don't think that looks good. But I would say with Ms. Slack, at least table it till after everything that's going off the T V C is, is panned out. Whatever changes and revamps they wanna do, let that be done.
Mr. Chairman, as I stated in, in my presentation, we, we have several constraints on this property and, and, and things that we have to take into consideration. And, and one of those is that my client has property under contract. And unfortunately, a, a tabling tonight would require him to go back and get an extension from the property owner. And so we don't know that we're gonna get that. And so, you know, unfortunately, we, we really need to move forward tonight in order to be up in front of the board, probably in February, is when this item will go before the Board of County Commissioners. And so we're hearing this commission, we're hearing your concerns. And I think the best, unfortunately, I, we have, we can't afford to take a tabling tonight. And so if there's specific, you could adopt it the way staff has the conditions, which is a redesign of the flowway. You could say that the standards have to go back to the Board of County Commissioners, but this project really has to move forward tonight. And I hate to do that. Um, I know I've been tabled a couple of times before this board, but in this situation, we really, we really can't, it can't be held up.
Mr. Chair.
Basically, holding up of the project as a title of the project.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Curry. Would you be agreeable then if we just simply denied this and moved it on to the B O C C?
Well, I don't like that, Mr. Odell, but if that's what it takes for us to move forward, then, then we can do that.
Chair.
Or we could make a, make a, a motion with some condition.
We can motion with some condition or we can deny it. But if it goes in front of the board and the board approves it, the board approves it. Regardless of what, because remember, we're just a recommending body. If we table it, that's the only leverage we have. Anything other than tabling it, it's completely, we can say whatever we want here tonight and it ain't gonna, it does not have to, there's nothing.
If we can make a motion with the condition and, and then accept it, the board.
Again, we're recommending.
Just approve it or, or.
The other thing I wanted just to mention, I was, Karen just reminded me, is there's, there's no, there's no amendments to the T V C. The only amendments that are proposed to the T V C are what's before you tonight. This meeting with the consultants, this meeting before the Board of, Board of County Commissioners, if you table us tonight waiting on those, you're tabling us indefinitely. There's no time where those text amendments are gonna be coming back before this board or before the Board of County Commissioners. So tabling based on that is tabling this project indefinitely.
But at the same time, we're being given an ultimatum to approve text amendments, allow sixty percent of the front of a house on a thirty-foot wide lot to be garages too. And like being told, either do it now or you're screwing us, but at the same time, that's not our problem. That's, I understand, I empathize with that, but that's not our problem either.
Staff said earlier that they were told by the board to move forward with these, with these changes, even though the other changes potentially coming. I believe I heard staff say that.
Are there other projects you see in St. Lucie County that are approved under the conditions that you want?
Um, no, sir. There's only been one other residential T V C project that I'm aware of and it followed it and was approved, I believe, two years ago and has not been built yet. These standards that we're proposing are brand-new standards, there are brand-new changes that have not been proposed. As staff stated, I believe there's a project to the north of us that's coming in with additional changes, more substantial changes than what we're proposing. But I don't know the status of that application. I think, I think staff said that it was gonna be up in February is what they're proposing, but I do know that application has been postponed several times. So I, um, there's nothing that's been approved under these standards, under these new conditions, I'm sorry, new text that we're proposing tonight.
Chair, low members of, of the commission, certainly engaged dialogue this evening, uh, simply would, would reiterate the, the notation made by Ms. Settlemeyer that, uh, the Board of County Commissioners has provided guidance to staff to continue processing applications, um, when, uh, valuated and complete through the Development Review Committee to schedule them for public hearing before this body. And your constructive feedback on policy-related changes, design-related projects and rezonings is certainly valued, but.
Mr. Chair, in conjunction with that, yeah, I, I understand the need to continue, or to continue processing applications. But the text amendment is a text amendment and that's not project-related. And so I, I'm comfortable with moving this forward with our recommendations and especially Ms. Slack's and Mr. Benner's recommendations on the project itself. But the text amendment, I think, is a little premature, in my opinion.
But they're not gonna get the project without that text amendment.
That's where I'm at.
There are motions in on D. Somebody like to make the motion?
I motion to table D. Second.
The motion, the table, do you second it?
Second.
Do a date certain?
Any discussion?
Till the January meeting.
Yeah, January eighteenth, um, would be the, the next scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting.
The motion to table it's a January eighteen.
May I add to your table?
Sure.
We would like to continue, I would suggest to amend the motion.
Oh, we can call the vote. Madam Secretary, call the vote, please.
I'd like to hear what her amendment to my motion would be.
Discussion on the amendment.
Motion to, 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 uh, curate, to, to January the eighteenth.
My amendment would be, we, we move to continue this item to January eighteenth, pending a revision of the site plan to include perimeter wildlife corridor and chain of lakes, pedestrian, uh, active recreation-type open space.
We're on the text amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just the text amendment.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Mr. Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bridges?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Low?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Low's in there. Chairman Low, yes. I guess continue to January the eighteenth.
That's on the text amendment, correct?
Nine E.
That's on the rezone.
Somebody like to make, make a motion?
I move we continue the rezone process pending, uh, to January eighteenth. Pending a revision to the site plan to incorporate a perimeter chain of lakes with wildlife corridor, active recreation open space and, uh, s, single-family lot size to be increased or converted to a townhouse product.
The motions are second on that motion.
Second.
Mr. Neese?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Benner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Odell?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bridges?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Low?
And that's to January the eighteenth too also, yeah. Yes, ma'am. They're both continued to January the eighteenth. And then they'll get with the county and try to resolve these issues. Number ten workshops, we have them planned. January eighteenth, that by the way, is a vote for the board, the new board, the directors, other business. Did everybody sign the, uh, card for Craig Munt that I, have you signed it? Will you come up and sign it?
Mr. Chair.
If not, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
You too.
I wanted to just add tonight. Okay. Wanted to just add tonight that if we have a chance to sneak in a workshop in the very near future, uh, even if it's not at our regular scheduled meeting time, uh, I would like to do a review of rules of order, if you don't mind.
You set up a workshop?
Chair Low will collaborate with the San Luis County, County Attorney's Office to explore, uh.
And then give us, we're gonna need a few dates too.
Yeah, it'd be good to have a refresher course for all of us.
Thanks. Appreciate it. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna go meet him and I'm gonna give him ideas too. He lives next door to me.
Second.
Did you get your camera?
I did, thank you.
Did you get your flashlight?
I did, thank you.
My company, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, you too. Wish you the best.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, Merry Christmas.
I missed my wife left me.
Well, do you need any help?